You're watching JaxPDS More, WJCT Jacksonville.
The School Board of Duval County District, School District is now convening in its regular monthly meeting. To everyone present and to our television viewers, I wish to extend a warm welcome to this meeting of the Duval County School Board. Division Statement of the Duval County School Board states, "Every student is inspired and prepared for success in college or career and life." The Mission Statement of the Duval County School Board is, "To provide educational excellence in every school, in every classroom, for every student, every day." The Duval County School Board is here tonight to listen to reports from district staff and to set policy for the district that will improve student achievement. We will also address budgets, contracts, personnel appointments, and other business items that require a vote of the Board. The management and day-to-day operations of the district are the responsibility of the superintendent. It is not the role of the Board to make managerial or operational decisions. The Board has policies and procedures in place to assist the superintendent in resolving management and operational issues. If items appear to move quickly, it is because the Board meets in an agenda committee meeting prior to the Board meeting for an in-depth review of all agenda items. The committee meeting for the March 1st, 2022 School Board meeting will be held on February 15th, 2022 at 9:00 a.m., and the public is invited to attend. As a show of courtesy and respect to each other, we ask that all mobile phones be turned off and that no flash photography be used during the meeting. For those wishing to address the Board during our public comments portion of the Board meeting, please note that we will accept speaker cards until 6:20 p.m. The CDC currently recommends that everyone two years of age or older who are not fully vaccinated should wear a mask in indoor public spaces. Thank you for taking the time to join us this evening and for your interest in the operation of the Duval County School District. Board members, I invite you to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. And today, for a moment of silence, we have lost a legend in Jimmy Johnson, so we'll be doing a moment of silence for all and plus our dear friend Jimmy Johnson. Our pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we will have our school presentations from District 5 Rutledge H. Pearson Elementary School. You can applause as they come forward.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Board Member Jones, thank you for allowing me to showcase my wonderful school Rutledge H. Pearson. I am Carolyn Davis, and this starts the third year as serving as the school leader. Now, I'm not sure if you all have heard, but Rutledge Pearson received a grade of A this past school year. Thank you. One of just three schools in the state that was able to make that, to make that. But, and we're very proud of that work. But what we're also very proud of is the culture that we've created at our school. A place where kids are happy, teachers work hard, and parents trust that we're giving it our all every day in the best interests of their children. I became a principal in 1998, my first assignment. Starting in 1998, I signed off on my letters and memos in the interest of all children. Today, I still sign off on my emails and letters in the interest of all children. That is my work. And the Communications Department came out to our school in November to do a promotional video, interviewed several of our teachers behind closed doors. I didn't know what they were saying or what their real thoughts were on me being, on them being asked to participate in the video. But after reviewing it, it warmed my heart because my teachers, my stakeholders, my office staff, my parents, my students, understand the mission that we've tried to create, the culture that we've tried to create in our building, a culture where kids feel loved. And for me, the grade, yes, that's the main goal. But as a school leader, I want happy children. Because with happy children, you're able to push just a little harder every single day. So the video that you're gonna watch, I hope you're able to see the culture that we've tried to build at our school and just the involvement and the interactions between the teachers and our students. Thank you.
This is the place for your child, your neighbor's child, for my child. Everyone is going to care about your child's success.
It's caring about our kids, building relationships with them.
It's that connections that you have with the family. It's the love that we give to the student. We show up every day and work for kids. It's for the kids.
This community knows that we're here to educate your child. The parents understand that we want the kids to learn. We want to give them what they need to succeed.
Everyone works together, whether it's second grade helping fifth grade, whether it's the faculty stepping in. We all make sure that this is a family environment to ensure the best learning.
It's paying attention to our data. And it's not just, well, beginning-of-the-year data and end-of-the-year data. It's checking your data on a regular basis.
We had Saturday school during the pandemic. And I'm a first-grade teacher, but I came for those third and fourth, fifth graders. So it's just the dedication of teachers that want to come on a Saturday, that want to plan during their planning time, wants to grab a kid and say, "Hey, come over here. Let's go over some things."
One of the most telling signs that a teacher takes pride in where they work and they believe in the work that's going on, if that teacher can say, "You know what? I like this so much that I'm gonna bring my own child here." And that's what I knew, bringing my child here to Pearson. I knew that she was gonna get a quality education. They were gonna see her as a person that needed to be nurtured and cared for.
I think as a parent, if I came in and saw that type of vibe and community that we have at the school, that that would make me choose to want to come here.
You want to bring your child somewhere where you know that they are not only safe, but they're loved as well. You want to bring your child to a family school, one where your kid is gonna be taken care of from the top of their head to the bottom of their feet, including that little brain that they got going on. That's Rutledge.
Thank you. That's it?
Stay, stay, stay for a second. I want to give Board Member Jones a chance. We're just sitting in awe of the video. Sorry.
Thank you so much.
No, that was an amazing video. Board Member Jones, any comments?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think, having heard from Mrs. Davis, you all know now why she was Principal of the Year and how she was able to take Rutledge Pearson from a D to A in one year. And because of that, I think it's time we build them a new school. So I would move.
Done.
We'll take it.
Okay, thank you.
No, congratulations on all this success. It is very apparent why you are the Principal of the Year. We're so proud of you and the staff. And the video just, it goes to show, it's not just you, it trickles down into the staff and the students. It's a beautiful thing to see. So I'm just so appreciative of your efforts and your leadership over the years. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There's some fans out there for Rutledge. We're gonna quickly move on to Ms. Vicky Pierre. We'll begin our presentations for this evening.
Five extraordinary teachers took the stage in January to find out who would be crowned the 2022 VisStar Duval County Teacher of the Year. While they are all deserving of this honor, only one could take home the prize. Tonight, we recognize their dedication to their students and honor each of them before the superintendent and board. Here with us to celebrate these everyday heroes is Jacksonville Public Education Fund President Rachel Tuttwiler-Fortune. And each teacher will also be receiving a superintendent's coin of excellence from Dr. Green. Beginning with our finalists, we recognize first-grade teacher Ms. Amanda Hildenbrand of Crown Point Elementary. Ms. Hildenbrand always knew she wanted to give back to her community, and a passion for teaching gave her the opportunity to do just that. We're told she amazes her parents each year by creating a classroom culture that promotes positivity while also challenging her students. Please help us congratulate Teacher of the Year finalist Amanda Hildenbrand. Shakia Lee, a third-grade ELA and Social Studies teacher at Biscayne Elementary Leadership Academy, is our next finalist. Ms. Lee is said to bring learning to life, going above and beyond expectations, to immerse her students in a full educational experience. Specializing her instruction to each student, her students excel in a safe and rigorous learning environment to reach their full potential. Congratulations, Ms. Lee. Our next Teacher of the Year finalist is Ms. Candace Lilly, a kindergarten teacher at Mandarin Oaks Elementary. Known for making learning fun, Ms. Lilly encourages her students to be confident even if they make a mistake. She believes that in order to promote strong, intelligent, confident, and successful students, there must be a strong relationship established with families. Please help us congratulate Ms. Lilly. We continue our recognitions with Mr. Nick Nelson, a second-grade teacher at Sable Palm Elementary. Mr. Nelson teaches with a philosophy focused on growth and challenges students to take ownership of their learning and everything they do. Parents have said that he inspires students to be unapologetically themselves and that he brings a ray of sunshine to the classroom. Please help us congratulate Mr. Nelson. Last but not least, our 2022 VisStar Duval County Teacher of the Year is Mr. Charles Magdaluyo of John Reball Senior High School. The ninth and 10th-grade human anatomy and physiology teacher has created such an open and welcoming environment for his students, they are never afraid to ask questions in class or to make mistakes. He says, "What inspires me as an educator is my students' success stories. Every aha moment, every smiling face whenever they understand something they thought was difficult, every time they take a risk or do something in front of the class to show they can also do what other students can do. These are things that don't just inspire me, but drive me to do better day by day." Please help us congratulate our 2022 VisStar Duval County Teacher of the Year. Continuing our recognition of everyday heroes, we now honor our Assistant Principal of the Year finalists and Assistant Principal of the Year. And again, we're joined by Mrs. Tuttwiler-Fortune, and each will also be receiving a coin of excellence. We begin with Georgette Jones of Garden City Elementary. Given her belief in developing the whole child physically, mentally, and socially, it's no surprise she was nominated for this award. She believes that learning the dreams of her students and staff, as well as exploring multiple and creative methods to create solutions, are keys to success. Please us, help us congratulate Assistant Principal of the Year finalist, Georgette Jones. Our second Assistant Principal of the Year finalist is Michael Byrd of Westside Middle School. Ms. Byrd seeks out creative avenues to prepare students for college and career. So much so, so much so, she proposed and cultivated a partnership with UPS, leading to the creation of a program called Leadership Strategies. Some students who were a part of this program were hired after graduation, and a few are even thriving supervisors. Please help us congratulate Ms. Byrd. Next, we recognize Baldwin Middle Senior High School Assistant Principal, Ms. Mimsani Khan. Ms. Khan embraces a mission to improve teaching and learning daily. She's modeled best practices, increased positive working relationships, and collaborates with colleagues to improve teaching and learning. Please help us congratulate Ms. Khan. Closing out our finalists is Ms. Hope Tepper of RV Daniels Elementary. Known for going beyond the expected, Ms. Tepper provides a touch of warmth and personal care for the entire faculty. She's constantly seeking new ideas and strategies that will lead to increased student achievement, and that includes activities such as Title I Family Nights and using survey data to further impact the Enterprise Learning Academy. Congratulations to Ms. Tepper. Finally, for our Assistant Principal of the Year, and that honor goes to Ms. Candace Glover-Bullock of Long Branch Elementary School. Ms. Glover-Bullock is known for impacting the learning environment beyond measure. And as an example, in an effort to improve behavior and increase stakeholder involvement, Ms. Glover-Bullock coordinated the robotics program at Long Branch Elementary. Please help us congratulate our Assistant Principal of the Year Candace Glover-Bullock. We often hear that not all heroes wear capes, but in the case of this next group, you could say they all wear many hats. We're speaking of our Principal of the Year finalists and our Principal of the Year winner. They're also joined again by Ms. Tuttwiler-Fortune, and they're also receiving a superintendent's coin of excellence. We begin with Elizabeth Kavanaugh of Neptune Beach Elementary School. Ms. Kavanaugh has a relentless pursuit to improve instruction for all students. And she says, "My fuel is my students and the smiles on their faces as they learn. They are the most important part of this job." Please help us congratulate Ms. Kavanaugh. Dr. Gregory Bostick of Jean Rebault Senior High School is our next Principal of the Year finalist. Dr. Bostick says he joined Reball during a time of community doubt, and so he sought to turn community perception around and change the climate and culture of the school. He says by integrating himself in the community, attending community events, and sharing the positive things that go on at Reball, he's made real headway in changing the perception of the school. Please help us congratulate Dr. Bostick. Principal Suzanne Schall of Kernan Trail Elementary is our next Principal of the Year honoree. She says, "Improving student learning is at the heart of everything we do, and my experience has taught me that the best way to reach all students is to have a high-quality teacher." She brings forward-looking ideas, a passion for excellence, and a willingness to take risks in order to produce positive results. Congratulations, Mrs. Schall. Charger Academy Principal Andrea Tally is our next honoree. She is dedicated to providing students with the critical support needed to become college and career-ready and successful in life pursuits. She also seeks to cultivate a safe and nurturing learning environment where students can connect, learn, and grow. Please help us congratulate Ms. Tally. Last but not least is Principal of the Year Carolyn Davis of Rutledge Pearson Elementary School. Principal Davis says, "My commitment to my teachers is to create a school culture that allows them to be their best." That commitment is evident as Rutledge Pearson has advanced from a D to an A under her leadership. In the end, Ms. Davis knows that building relationships and creating a strong team is vital to taking schools like Rutledge Pearson and making them shine. Congratulations, Principal Davis, Principal of the Year. For our final presentation, we congratulate the Community Partnership School at Ed White High School for recently completing a rigorous certification process. And we're welcoming a number of partners with us this evening. And among them are Ed White Principal Tracy Baptiste, Ed White's Community Partnership School Director with Children's Home Society of Florida, Philip Simmons, Florida State College at Jacksonville, Dean of Education and Human Services, Dr. Tara Haley, Student Representatives, Nico Flowers and Kizzy Montgomery, Parent Representative, Yvette Montgomery, Children's Home Society of Florida Associate Regional Executive Director, Rebecca Couch, Children's Home Society of Florida Regional Executive Director, Ernest Hamilton, Agape Family Health Chief Operating Officer, Tabitha Ball, University of North Florida Director of Clinical Practices and Educational Partnerships, Dr. Rebecca Burns, and Duval County Public Schools Chief of Schools, Scott Schneider. And here to make presentations is Dr. Amy Ellis, the Director of the Center for Community Schools at the University of Central Florida. And joining Dr. Ellis are Amy Floyd, Alexandra Gregory, and Robert Palmer from the University of Central Florida's Center for Community Schools.
Good evening. It is an absolute honor and privilege for us to be with you this evening to celebrate this huge milestone in the history of Edward H. White High School as a community partnership school. As many of you know, some of you know, community partnership school is a model of community school that brings together four or more core partners to the center of ensuring that our students have what they need to be successful. Today, we're celebrating five very special partners that have been at the table for a long time, ensuring that those students and families have what they need. Agape Community Health, Children's Home Society of Florida, Duval County Public Schools, the University of North Florida, and Florida State College at Jacksonville. Today is one of those days, a day to reflect and a day to recognize the magnitude of work that has been accomplished here at Edward H. White High School, all aimed to better the lives of our students and our families. And we will say, right, that UCF certification is not an easy process. Yes, the process was developed to ensure that there's a fidelity of a model that's been replicated across the state. There are 12 standards that must be reached. They include collaborative leadership and expanded learning. We know that the wellness supports, right, that are so imperative for our students to be successful. Evaluation and sustainability, ensuring that we're here for the long haul, that we're here for 25 years or greater, because we know that the students and the families deserve just that. The partners must be active, they must be aligned, and they must be in with the services that are best, most meaningful to the students on the campus. So we say that this is a distinguished honor, right, to be a UCF-certified community partnership school. And it really does set Ed White aside and apart from other schools. And it really does represent this intentional dedication that we see before us. Ed White's only the seventh in the state, and it's the first in Duval County and the only in Duval County to become certified as a community partnership school. So I want to recognize all of you here. I also want to specifically recognize three individuals that are the backbone of some of this. We call them the trifecta. So they are the principal of the school, so Principal Baptiste, the director, Philip Simmons, and the cabinet chair, Dr. Haley. So I just, I commend all of you, but I specifically, this is the backbone, and all of these folks that are here are the backbone of this effort. So we are here to celebrate all of you, but don't forget all the community members, all of the families, and all of the students who really do make this effort what it is. It's with them that we do this work. So on behalf of the UCF Center for Community Schools, we see you, we recognize you, and we really do celebrate you for this great accomplishment. As you can see, we have a banner for you, and we acknowledge you. So congratulations.
Can we have one more round of applause for all of our recipients this evening? Congrats to our Teacher of the Year, our Principal Assistant Principal, and Ed White. We'll now move on to the approval of the February 1st, 2022 Agenda. The Duval County School Board approved the February 1st, 2022 Agenda as submitted on January 25th, 2022 with the following changes. Recognition Presentation of Awards, Communication UF-Certified Community Partnership School at Ed White High School, item added. Approval of Minutes, item amended. Chief of Staff, Public Hearing and Vote Revision to Chapter 2 Board Policy Attachment, amended. Ask for a motion.
Still move.
Moved by Board Member Jones, seconded by Board Member Anderson. Any discussion? Hearing non, call for your vote. By your action, you have approved this motion 7-0. We'll now move on to the Chairman's report. Sensitive. I wanted to start this evening, we did a moment of silence for Jimmy Johnson. For those who don't know, a legend, a legend in our community. As someone who has not born in Jacksonville, one of the names I heard when I moved here was the legend of Jimmy Johnson. And I had a chance to interact and meet him, so I'm just so privileged that I have the opportunity. We wanted to take a moment just to recognize him for his leadership, his accomplishments, and all he's provided and done for this community. And I asked for a couple of notes, and amazingly enough, the staff, I believe, over at the school found an old resume of Jimmy Johnson. I swear, it's typed, like it's typed on a typewriter, probably from around the '70s, I bet. So I just want to read off some of the things about Jimmy Johnson, that you can see some on the screen, but he was born in December 3rd, 1933, right here in Jacksonville, Florida. Married to Thelma Johnson. He has a number of children, Levon, Janice, and Jewel. He was a graduate of Stanton Senior High School. He went on to Florida A&amp;M, and he rattlers in the house. He went on to Florida A&amp;M, and he rattlers in the house. And he got a master's from Florida A&amp;M as well. He was a high school teacher and coach, starting in 1957. He started as a teacher and assistant coach. He went on to continue to do that, became an athletic director at Stanton. Then he went over to Raines, was the athletic director and coach, and then assistant principal, and became the principal of William &amp; Raines in 1979. And went on to do amazing things with that school. The culture that's built there now, that foundation is built because of this man that you see on the screen. He also was a board member here, and what's so wild is I sit in the Chairman's seat now, and he was the Chair of the Board. And just to think about the seats that we get to sit in, and the history that's sat in these seats in these offices that we get, so powerful. So I just wanted to spend a moment just recognizing this legend that we have in our community, knowing that it's the first month of Black History, and this is the Black History that I enjoy telling my children about. So can we have a round of applause for this amazing man? And we will more than likely do something more formal. This just happened, of course, as you know, this is shocking news, and we just heard about that early this week. So we will be doing some things more formally for him and his family, because we want to make sure that his legacy lives on, and it will, and we want to make sure that we make that more formal. So thank you for that. Wanted to just mention a few other things. As we think about this month, we have a great partnership, I'm glad Rachel Tuttwiler, our Fortune is Here. We have an amazing partnership going on with the Jacksonville Public Education Fund, where we're looking to support and partner in recruiting 1,000 men of color to come in in our classrooms by 2025. A daunting feat, but something that is so critical and so important to make sure that we have amazing teachers in front of our students, and more importantly, amazing teachers who I can identify. And we believe that getting 1,000, along with all the other teachers that we have, is a great step in that direction. Excited to partner with JPEF. And in addition, one of the things that we're taking on as a district and we're spearheading is the ONES Black Male Collective. So we're actually, we want to make sure black men that are teachers in our district see each other. They can build community, help each other to develop professionally and personally, to help not only make sure that their success is elevated, but also they're retained, and we can recruit more. So we're excited to launch the ONES. The ONES is going to have a kickoff at the end of this month, and those invites are going to go out soon. So really thrilled about that. Thank you to our partners at JPEF, Vicky Schultz and her team in HR, because this is going to be a collaborative effort, and we're going to see the fruits of that. So very, very thrilled about 1,000 by 2025 and all the collective efforts. So it is Black History Month, and I could not leave without making sure that we started this month with you knowing, like, what history we have in our backyard. We mentioned Jimmy Johnson earlier, and he is a legend when it comes to it. But I also wanted to just make sure there are some other names that you may or may not know that I wanted to just call out in the beginning of this month. And after I do this, we'll talk through it, and I know Dr. Green has some amazing events that she's going to talk about lined up for Black History Month, but I wanted to start this way. This is Jeopardy! All right, let's see, this is, we're educators, so let's see if we can, you know any of this. He was the head of the March on Washington in 1963, where Martin Luther King Jr. delivered the "I Have a Dream" speech. And all of these facts that you'll see today, they actually were facts and things that were studied by our African-American History Writing Group from this past summer. So these are all topics and people that they got to research and find out more about, our local legends. Asa Philip Randolph.
Yes.
That's it, yeah, somebody got it or decided about it. So not only, he actually moved to Jacksonville when he was about three years old, grew up here, and he was one of the two people that helped coordinate the March on Washington, which was about advancing careers. So how fitting that that school, which is all about career advancement, is named after Asa Philip Randolph, who grew up right here in Jacksonville, Black History, right there. I have a few more. This American, was the American first black pilot who died in a plane crash here in Jacksonville on the field by Paxton High School. And this is something I didn't know, this detail. Female pilot, yeah, we're getting there. Bessie Coleman. So Bessie Coleman has ties to Jacksonville because of that plane crash. First black female pilot. We should all know this one. "Lift Every Voice and Sing," one of the most popular anthems when it comes to African-Americans and Black History, was written and set to music by Jacksonville brothers James Weldon Johnson and Jay Rosman Johnson. It was also performed at the first time publicly in Jacksonville with 500 children from Stanton in the commemoration of the which US President's 91st birthday. That's right. I hope you all are jotting these down, we're learning some things today. Abraham Lincoln. So these two gentlemen, right here in Jacksonville, Florida, wrote that song that is sung around the world and also sung it for the first time publicly with 500 students from here to Abraham Lincoln. Quite historic. That is definitely history that we need to make sure that we keep moving. All right. The famous baseball player got his first big break here in Jacksonville at the Durkey/JP Small Field. This is always exciting to talk about this young man. Everybody knows it, or you should. Hank Aaron. That's right, right there in Durkeyville, JP Small Park, this is where he got his sort of first break. So he has ties to Jacksonville, and that's the thread of Black History is right here. Oh, I gave the answer away. Sorry, I'm not a good host, I'm not a good host. Founded in 1935, first black resort community in the state. First black resort community in the state of Florida. And you already saw it, it's American Beach. Still, to this day, American Beach is there and has so much historical value. So wanted to make sure we said that. And famous performer, attended Florida School of the Deaf and the Blind, St. Augustine, before moving to Jacksonville in 1945. I heard it out there, that's right, Ray Charles, good stuff. I've got some great, if there was prizes, y'all would win them in the back. So I just wanted to pause and just, we live in such a community with such a rich history, and it's great that we get February to pause, but if you think about it, we get to experience Black History every single day. The names on some of our schools, our students, I saw our students all the time. You are Black History. When we do these slides, when the Chairman 10, 15 years from now gets up here, they're going to have someone else, a current student potentially, who's on one of these slides talking about Black History. So I'm thrilled about what we've done and thrilled about where we're going when it comes to Black History. So I just wanted to pause on the first day of Black History Month to make sure that we're ready. So y'all are ready, your arms, go out and tell your friends about some of those facts there. Oh, and last year, it is, session is in in Tallahassee. We all know it, it has been quite a session already. It started on January 11th, it's going to end March 11th. I know myself and many of our other board members have been diligently contacting, having phone calls and meetings with our electeds who are in Tallahassee. We are hopeful that many of the bills that we see will not make it all the way through. And we're also hopeful that there are some positive bills that are going to be able to come through, and they're going to help us on the district level. I want to yield some of my time to Cindy, Board Member Pearson, to talk a little bit about, we're getting ready to embark upon this week, actually, a day in the Legislature, and she's going to talk quickly about that, and then some of the bills of note that are here on this slide. Board Member Pearson?
So we started out our legislative effort in November, presenting our Duval Public Schools Legislative Platform to the Duval delegation when they were here meeting in town. And then this will be the kind of the next big step. We'll be meeting with school board members from around the state for FSBA Day in the Legislature. Tomorrow, we will travel to do that, advocacy workshops and some other training for that. And then on Thursday, meeting with our members of the Duval delegation, and our counterparts will be meeting with the members from their delegations. Just kind of for context, about 200 of the 2,000 bills filed are education bills for this session, and they're as diverse as student assessments, sovereign immunity, handling lawsuits against districts, and school safety. And those are just the ones that begin with S, apparently. But there are some others in there that are quite different topics that we are following, and different ones of us are following different bills, and then we're also looking at the ones that go with our platform. But I wanted to give just kind of a little overview. This is something I enjoy talking about. But if you remember back to Schoolhouse Rock, you do know that not all bills become law, right? And there is a process where most bills will have some kind of amendment or change to them as they go through the process. And there's cooperation, and some bills never make it, they get left on the steps, and some do go all the way to the governor's desk and get signed. There is an opportunity for us as constituents, as citizens, as voters, as high school students, people who are impacted by legislation, to give input during the committee process in particular, which is the part that we're in right now. And so the people that you would reach out to would be the Duval delegation members, our state House and senators who represent our area, but also the bill sponsor would be another good person or co-sponsors. And then the committee members, bills have a pathway that they go through, and they're heard in committees. And so reaching out to the people on the committees who are going to hear a particular bill is actually very helpful. And just a couple ways to do that. I know that several of the bills have been in the news and the papers, and they'll be referred to either by their name or by HB, and then a series of numbers, or SB and a series of numbers. If you want to get more information, you can really just do a search on the internet with, and this is what I've been doing, SB 1300, and I put FL behind it, and it'll pop up. And you can get, it'll take you right to the page. Another way to do it is you can go to flsenate.gov for Senate bills, or myfloritahouse.gov for bills going through the House. And if you go to their homepages, there are a couple of different things that you can do. If you know the number of your bill, there's a search engine at the top where you can just put the number in, hit search, and it'll take you to the page for that bill, and it'll tell you the pathway that it's going through the committee, it'll tell you who the bill sponsor is, and then, and it'll tell you what's been done. And then you can also click and read that piece of legislation or proposed piece of legislation. But you can also just stay on the homepage, and that will give you links to committee meetings that you can watch. I watched one yesterday, actually while I was watching my daughter's soccer game, listening to it, watching and watching soccer all at the same time. And so that is a very portable way to follow what's going on and still be engaged. And all of that information is on these two sites. And most things, I have found, have been pretty accessible just by doing a really kind of easy, simple internet search and a little bit of poking around. I feel like the homepages are pretty intuitive. But we know that our Duval community is very engaged on issues that they feel are important. And I would ask you to take that advocacy and that engagement and now apply it to the bills that are going through the House and the Senate for things that you care about. Because this is an area where we are meeting with legislators and working the pathways that we can work. We need your help, and I'm not going to say which bills. Find the ones that you care about, either that you strongly favor or don't favor, or you like, but there's a part of it that you have questions about, and engage with those. Because that's how your elected officials know how the people they represent feel about what they are proposing to do. Thanks.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much, and we have a legislative liaison, and that's why I had Board Member Pearson talk through that. So as we mentioned, a number of the board members will be going up to Tallahassee this week to meet with folks that are in Tallahassee that are making these decisions. And I know a lot of us also have had phone calls and conversations. And really, that insight is helpful, because a lot of bills that get put up are never going to even make it. So having these conversations helps us to know on a heat map which ones are actually going to make it through, which ones are gaining traction, so we can actually help direct and make sure that we are focused in the right areas. So thank you so much, Board Member Pearson, all the other board members for the work going on there. And we'll keep a close eye out and navigate for the ones that we know are going to help our students, our staff, and our faculty here in Duval County. Thank you so much. And that ends my chair report, and I'll now pass it over to Dr. Green for her superintendent's report.
Thank you, Chair Willie. If I could, I also have a short report, because we're going to ask Ms. Paula Remfro to come and do a report on the mathematics textbook adoption. So I'm going to try to go through mine very quickly. As always, if we look at our COVID-19 positive cases by week, you saw when we came back from winter break, a huge spike, almost double what it was last year. But as you can see, last week, we're starting to see a decline in number of cases. Our hope is that it will continue the same trend that we experienced last year. This is also our community data showing, again, the huge spike. And as you can see, we're starting with the cases per 100,000, starting to see a sharp decline. And as you know, cases per 100,000 declines quicker than sometimes the positivity rate declines, as well as it can go vice versa. So these two numbers aren't guaranteed to be in the same category at the same time. When we look at our DCPS testing comparison, we are continuing to test our employees who are symptomatic. Again, when we came back from winter break, we saw a huge spike. And as you can see, last week, there's now starting to have a huge decline. Hopefully, that trend will continue as the trend of our cases per week. So if this continues, as I stated once before, I won't give a COVID update at every workshop or board meeting. So I'm hoping that we will get to that point where we will only just have to have a mention of what we're doing. But I did also want to inform the board that we sent out an email to all of district staff this afternoon just before the board meeting, indicating that we're going to continue with our COVID-19 mitigated strategies. Those strategies include all employees to continue to wear facial coverings, strongly encourage students, but it is a parent's decision of whether a student is going to wear a mask. We will continue with our vaccine clinics. We sent that information out last week or earlier this week, continuing that process. One of the things that we have added in our arsenal, which I reported at the last board meeting, is that we have taken advantage of the other type of testing. It's rapid indigent testing, you get the results in 15 minutes. When we get those tests, we will then be able to test asymptomatic employees. And it, but it has to be administered by a nurse, and that is why we can only offer it to employees. We still have our take-home test for students, so parents can continue, if they want a take-home test, they just need to come to the school and fill out the information, and they can have those take-home tests. So we are continuing to provide support to our families and to our employees. And I did state that we are disappointed that the Department of Health has made the decision not to continue contact tracing, but we are continuing our informing of families. At the secondary, when there is something at the school, we continue to inform families that an individual has tested positive at the school. At the elementary level, we take it down to the classroom so that individuals, if they test positive in a classroom, we let families know of that classroom that there's been a positive test in their, at their school and in a specific classroom. So we are continuing to support our schools by district staff going out. I substituted at Bayview on Monday. They were gracious to let me leave at noon. I had a wonderful class of first graders, that SSA class. I had a wonderful class of first graders, that SSA class of first graders, that truly it was a wonderful experience, as well as my experience at Greenland Pines and in the ESC classroom, something as a pair. So our administrators and our district-level staff will continue to go out. I do want to share an interesting story. Mr. Suarez substituted in fourth grade math and taught math. And I think Mr. Suarez, all that engineering did not prepare him for teaching math at Highlands Elementary School for fourth grade. But I understand he made it through, and the children still, they didn't, they weren't damaged by his teaching. They still are doing well. And so we will continue this. We will continue through Valentine's Day. And at the, at that point, we will make a decision whether we need to continue sending individuals out to help, help our schools. So that is my update as it relates to COVID-19. Chair Willie talked about Black History Month. Our schools are participating in a Black History Month contest. There are actually two different contests. There's a state contest for students to participate in, and we've sent that information out to our schools. So our schools are participating in the state Black History Contest. But our district also has a Black History Contest. The theme is innovation, reform, and turning points in African-American history. And as you can see, grades K through 2 and 3 through 5, it is a poster contest. And then grades 6 through 8, 9 through 12, they can do an essay, documentary, or develop a website. It's an individual student project. All projects are due Friday, February 18 by 4:00 p.m. That's also for the state essay contest. It's due also on Friday, February 18. The winners will be announced on February 25. Prizes for winning students and their teachers will be given at that time. Also, we have a number of events at schools for the board. We try to send that information to you when schools let us know that they're doing Black History programs or having their own individual event. So we will continue to send that information out. But we are also engaged in two community events. We will be participating with the Jumbo Shrimp screening of the film Red Tails in honor of the Tuskegee Airmen and their contribution during World War II. It will be Saturday, February, this Saturday, February 5 at 6:00 p.m. at the Jumbo Shrimp Field. Free entry for the first 2,000 attendees. So adults, get your children in first so that they can get the free attendees, and the cost is nominal. We also will have our third annual high school heritage classic baseball game between William M. Rains and Jean Ribault High School. That will be Friday, February 18 at 6:35 p.m., also at the Jacksonville Jumbo Shrimp Field. The student athletes will be wearing the customized red caps uniforms in a tribute to the Negro League team that reside in Jacksonville from 1938 to 1942. So I hope that you will have an opportunity to attend both or one of these events that we have happening for Black History Month. Also, we are celebrating CTE Month, Career Technical Education Month. We have two projects. Our school support was happening at our schools. We're doing a digital media campaign promoting DCPS CTE programs, aligning with the current recruitment efforts for school choice. We're doing CT highlights of courses, programs, students and staff, and our partnerships, and provide content for social media and website posts for schools. So schools are doing their own websites and their own social media posts for their Facebook pages and tying in CTE. Also, we're doing a CTE district newsletter. Some of the ideas that we're sharing and promoting is also celebrating African-Americans who have made a difference in the industry, tie it into Black History Month. We're inviting guest speakers into the classroom, work on authentic projects with industry partners. So many of our schools have started that process. I've had an opportunity to see one of the guest speakers in the classroom, and they do a phenomenal job. This is one project, School-Based Challenges, that I'm looking forward to. I'm waiting for my invitation to be a judge. It is the Cooking with Champions, a culinary arts competition in partnership with the Players and TCP Sodgrass. It will be February 8, the culinary competition. We had the kickoff earlier on the 28th, and it was a phenomenal kickoff, seeing the professional chef that works at TCP Sodgrass and letting the students know that the winning dish is hopefully going to be featured at the Players Championship. So we have six teams with three students from the following high schools, First Coast, Frank H. Peterson, Mandarin, and Sandalwood. So we look forward to that competition. At the district level, we are also celebrating CTE Month. We have our Parent Academy class that will be focused on CTE. It's February 9 at 6:00 p.m. It will do explanation of CTE and the benefits of having CTE, informing parents about the CTE programs that we have and the pathways, information sessions, ways to support their students in CTE, and how to become more involved in CTE. In addition, we will have the educator training. This training is specific for entrepreneurship and the opportunities for CTE teachers. Our goal is to bring that academy into more of our high schools. But this opportunity is paid for teachers to earn entrepreneurship and small business industry certification and create curriculum with other CTE teachers in the surrounding districts. So we're looking forward to that training. And then last is the Business Partner Workshop, February 23rd and 24th. We are developing workshops to support our comprehensive local needs assessment. It's the requirement now for the Perkins Grant. And so CTE will develop these workshops for our partners, the process of completing the comprehensive local needs. District and community stakeholders have the opportunity to provide feedback and participating in the development of the CTE strategic planning process for the Perkins Grant. Perkins, that grant is very important. It supports our CTE programs, but we're only allowed to use Perkins dollars on the programs that meet the criteria under the comprehensive local needs assessment. And that is why it's so important that we continue to remain in contact and engage with our community corporations, our businesses, so that we are aligning this grant with the needs of our community. And last but not least, we're also, oops, celebrating the arts. We have a number of arts events coming up. Board members, you should have received an email from me. Starting this Saturday, we're having the Duval Public Schools Honor Choir Performance. It will be at First Coast High School, starting at 12:30 p.m. to 2:00 p.m. The honors chorus is students coming from a number of different elementary schools coming together and creating one course. It is phenomenal, so I encourage you to attend if you can. Also, we will have the Northeast Florida Scholastic Art Awards. That will be on February 12 from 10:00 a.m. to 4:30. Look at the different times. No one is expecting anyone to stay from 10:00 a.m. to 4:30. They're at different times for each sort of grade band. From 10:00 a.m. to 12, that is the award ceremony at the Florida Theater. And then from 1:30 to 3:30, we will have exhibitions at the main public library, as well as exhibitions at the Jacksonville downtown, Jacksonville University Downtown. That is the Senior Gold Key Art Exhibit. And then from 2:00 to 3:30, we will also have the Gold-Silver Key Film Festival at the Mocha Museum, also located downtown on North Laurel Street. So we have a lot going on in the month of February with Black History, CTE Month, as well as performing arts events featuring our students. So I encourage everyone to attend. At this time, I'm now going to turn it over to Ms. Paula Rimpro, our Chief Academic Officer, who will give a presentation on the math adoption.
Hi, good evening. And just thinking of, I was thinking as Board Chairman Willie was talking about Jimmy Johnson. I was a teacher at RV Daniels, and Principal Jimmy Johnson was, leaded this, this whole theme of the Rains feeder pattern. So all of us in elementary and middle that fed into Rains, he bought all of us a T-shirt. RV Daniels was yellow. And so the incentive, every home game, there was a whole teacher section. So we were going to compete because we always had to have the most yellow at the Rains football games, and I'm sure he fed us too. But all of our students knew they were going to be a future Viking. And it was all due to him, so. Academic Services. So we, along with many school districts, all school districts across Florida, were reviewing math curriculum materials. So we're going to talk about the selection process that follows state statute language, our recommendations, the review team's recommendation, and then upcoming content Okay, so we have board policy, and we really consider this academic services playbook because Board Policy 4.20 says that the school board shall be legally responsible for all materials related to the operation of district schools, and the superintendent and his or her designee shall coordinate, facilitate the selection of this process. And that instructional materials shall be made on an equitable basis, based not only on student enrollment, but also student needs. And that a committee of instructional personnel and community members make up a part of that selection and review committee process, which is also aligned to Florida State Statute 1006 2.83 that really lays out the process for adopting materials. So how do we do it? The first thing we do, the state sends a bid of those materials that have gone through an initial review. Then as a district, we send notification out to vendors to invite them to participate in Duval County's review process. From there, we have a department of experts. So we have district math experts, administrators, as well as school-based or region-based math experts, coaches that have been involved with writing curriculum along with the district and writing assessments, someone that really has that deep knowledge of mathematics. So they go through that initial vetting, ensuring that there is complete alignment. And what we're speaking to now are the new best standards. From there, we, we identify schools in geographical neutral locations throughout the district to display the materials so that schools, teachers, families can review those materials. We also have them available in digital form, and we also, we have them housed currently here on the third floor of the school board building. From there, we have our, our full review committee team. That is where teachers, administrators, community people volunteer and take part in reviewing our, the, the recommendations after the vetting at the district level. So this year was a three-day process because of mathematics, there are many more courses and content-specific textbooks to review. So we go through that, and then they make their recommendation. We public notice that recommendation. We have those materials continue to be on display, as well as full digital resources that anyone can view at any time and give feedback. And then it brings us to our public hearing and board approval. So that is really the whole process, and that's what's outlined in state statute, too. So what was important? Alignment to best, 100% alignment to best. We also wanted a digital version of the textbook that is highly interactive and intuitive, not just an old PDF thrown up on the computer, but something that children can manipulate and they could use, they could see their assignment and the textbook side by side, not just, we don't want people clicking four and five clicks to get what they need. It was very important, if we're talking about equitable outcomes for all of our students, that those review committees and those materials have a keen awareness of the needs of our L population and ESC population, that there's intervention support seamlessly integrated into the curriculum to give teacher support that they don't have to hunt, but it's there for them. And also inclusive content and topics that require deep thinking on topics that matter to kids. I talked about who was engaged in that process, and it was really a terrific group. We had one dad, he wasn't able to stay the whole three days, but he was, he gave so much feedback and had, he said, "I have so much fun, I feel so badly that I can't come back for the third day." And it was, it was really, and he was a, he had an elementary child, but he chose to be on the high school adoption because he really wanted to stretch himself. So that's a testimony of the participation that took place. So we had over 114 individuals that voiced that they wanted to take part. As you know, when we went through the process, due to state statute language, when our recommendations need to be made, it took place in December, just as it did last year for ELA. So our numbers are really commensurate with the population, the numbers that we had last year for ELA. Given that we had COVID precautions that we took socially distanced, I was really happy with the quality of work that people fully engaged in. So let's talk about those outcomes. So over the course of three days, they had up to three different curriculums to go through, knowing that, as I just said, all of those requirements that we had, which were quite, quite a lot. And they also, they had a rubric. And within that rubric, they had to analyze to what degree the content met our requirements. So was there comprehension coverage of best standards, fluency built in for exploration and conceptual thinking? Was the content appropriately chunked and presented in a very logical sequence? We're talking about mathematics. So where is the integration of STEM experiences within mathematics so we can also have some cross-curricular experience for our children? Then they had to look at instructional support. What is it that's right there that's at the end of the teacher's fingertips so that he or she can reach the needs of all of her, his or her students? So that was very important. And also, when we are looking at instructional support, we also looked at assessments. So how were the assessments presented? Were they, did you have assessments that were presented across the content? Did you have different various types, not just ABC selections? How rich were those resources? And making sure that they also aligned to the vocabulary of best standards. And then, as I mentioned before, our support for ESC and ELL. It's very important. We have dual-language programs, so we have to ensure that we have high-quality materials that are also in Spanish. That's a non-negotiable for us, so that we are truly meeting the needs of all students. And that we're meeting the framework for MTSS for Tier 1, Tier 2, and Tier 3 instruction. We look at digital platforms, which I mentioned earlier, professional development. So not just regular face-to-face professional development. Where's the on-demand professional development? Where is the get-help links? Once again, taking away all that time that people waste searching for ways to teach the content that is embedded within the curriculum. Also, community and parent resources. How many of you sat in your chair and you're like, "I have not done this math in 20 years. Honey, ask someone else." We do that. Honey, ask someone else. We do that. And that was very important in the area of mathematics, that there are resources, communication, help tips that were there, that are there, that can be shared with families easily. And so this was the elementary adoption choices. And so the number one choice, and I wanted to give a comparison because there were two that were somewhat closer. And Invision Florida, best standard, and also we had HMH. And I'm sorry, it wasn't best standard, McGraw-Hill, McGraw-Hill Florida Reveal. So when we look at those pie charts, we see that an area that for us, when we're looking at Florida Reveal, although the reviewers found that to be number one, it was, it was, there was a lot of conversation because they really wanted to make certain that the parent resources were more robust. So that is something that's very important to us, to ensure that we are providing that. In 6th through 8th mathematics, we did something a little different this year. For the first time, we reviewed accelerated coursework in middle school. Previously, we provided our standard mathematics textbooks and we've written curriculum to incorporate, so in 6th grade, to incorporate those 7th grade standards in that acceleration course. And that teachers would print those materials while we wanted to ensure that we were differentiating, as we said, meeting the needs of all students. So in our 6th through 8th standards mathematics, as you see the chart, with the recommendation in some of our course areas, you'll see that there's two choices. There's two choices because we have teachers that teach standard mathematics and teachers that may teach accelerated mathematics. We don't want them teaching two different curriculums. So the team was very thoughtful, the middle school team. Those that were reviewing standard, we had separate teams that were reviewing accelerated, that they wanted to see two choices so that we could make very thoughtful decisions to provide unified content and curriculum that was high-quality and met the needs of children. So for the area of mathematics, the choice was, the number one choice was Invision Florida. And as you can see, comparing, when we look at the charts, we're looking at, so in this area in Invision, the ESA, ESC and L, we know that we are bridging MTSS strategies to a great degree, greater degree when we provide that curriculum. So now, I'm turning my pages, here we go. We have 6th grade, 7th grade accelerated. So in 6th grade accelerated, the review committee chose Florida Reveal. And in 7th grade accelerated, the number one was an Invision best. And this was the conversation where they said, this was a perfect example of why they made two choices. Because in 6th through 8th and in 7th grade accelerated, Invision best was the number one choice, but it was very close in 6th grade. That was their very close second choice. So those are the kinds of decisions, see, that we're making, why we have two choices. So this is what we really like about Invision best, that it has, the standards are revisited across topics. How many of you had math class where you learned one topic and that was it? You were like, either you, if you were really good, you're like, yes. If you didn't do well, you're like, whoo, I don't have to see that again. Well, in this curriculum, you'll see those standards coming back around, like you do in ELA. There is also family engagement resources. I think middle, families of middle schoolers will be very happy about that. And then also the standard, oh, I'm sorry. And then there's a differentiation library that teachers can use as a tool. And students also have opportunities to, for self-assessment with that textbook. Now, when we get to our Algebra 1 and Geometry, we really wanted a curriculum where everyone sees themselves as a successful math student. We wanted to dispel that whole notion of, "I'm not a math person." So it was really important to us and to the reviewer that we had resources that provided those true scaffolds because we know, this is the point, how many of you said, "Oh, algebra was amazing," or, "I am not an algebra person." We wanted to get over the hump and we wanted to do that with very, very explicitly for algebra and geometry. So you see with Florida Reveal that there's three-part instructional model with embedded differentiated support, very explicit. Interactive and customizable lesson presentations. Teachers really have some great flexibility and guidance how to teach particular content, to address misconceptions or preconceptions that students have about those particular math topics. And then very explicit support for our L population. Now we're truly getting into high school. And when I think about high school, I think about my very favorite teacher, Ms. Maria Herring. And she is now the Reverend Herring. And I think she's the Reverend Herring now is because she prayed for us so much in high school. But when I think about mathematics, I think about what would make Maria Herring so proud? And she was really a legend in our community. So when the reviewers looked at these higher-level mathematics, what they found was they needed to know that there was flexibility within the lessons and there was very explicit direction for students that would go down the path of misconceptions. So in Algebra 2, our best standards for math, they have lesson delivery provides opportunity for exploration, followed by explicit instruction. Lots of scaffolds provided for them. Learning targets and success criteria, so some self-direction for students. And then review and refresh exercises, bringing those topics back. Sorry. Now we have some new courses. So this is a new course. It's Math for College Algebra. And it really extends the learning for algebra. And these are one of the three pathways for college readiness now through these three courses that I'm about to present. In this particular recommendation that the review committee had, some of the key features are step-by-step solutions for all examples. Also STEM and cross-cultural, cross-curricular applications. We talked about that being something that was very important to us in the onset of all of our math adoptions. And then student additions include suggestions for problem-solving and point out common errors to avoid. So explicit guidance. We have now Math for College Liberal Arts. This is that second new course. And these are, these are for kids that they know they're going to college, but they really don't know necessarily the direction they're going to. Am I going to be an engineer? Am I going to be this? But they are continuing that, those applied mathematics topics. And Math for College Liberal Arts provides that. And it's really a class for everyone. We had a class similar, it just hasn't been used in quite a long time. It's an older course. So they revised it with best standards. And we have Math for College Statistics, another new course. So it's an extension of statistic topics as compared to the current statistics course. It goes a little deeper. So this is a new course and we've been hearing probably more of this, the topic of financial literacy. So the current Financial Algebra course, it expires at the end of this year. So this is the course that would, would replace that. So some differences between this course and the course that we have currently is that there, there is topics covering the determination of advantages and disadvantages of credit accounts, short and long-term loans, developing, understanding of planning for future through investments, insurance, retirement plans. So that's unique to this course that wasn't taught in the course previously. If you'll notice, there's, you'll start seeing red pies as we're getting to more advanced mathematics. I don't know. At first I was like, well, maybe they just think we're so doggone smart for the people who teach that. But we also know there's fewer opportunities for on-demand PD. So if any of these textbooks are purchased, we know that we're going to fill that void for, for teachers. And then this is an existing course that we've adopted. What I like about the Probability and Statistics Honors course, especially two features are embedded checks for understanding, so taking you through the path as you're going through the problem sets, not getting to the end and go, "Oh, gosh, I got that wrong." But really scaffolding that help. And then simulations. So within the e-text, there are guided simulations with the, with the problem sets. So they don't have to go into YouTube to try to figure that out anymore with this course. Precalculus honors. Real-world STEM applications, once again. And then this, this particular publisher has a MyMathLab. And it's a, it's a library of scaffold-guided lessons to support students when they're engaged in independent learning or home learning. Calculus honors. Once again, this is just, it's an existing course. And it also creates those learning lab opportunities for students that they haven't had before. So now, upcoming adoptions. In social studies, we made the decision to postpone social studies adoption to the 2023-2024 school year because there, there are a lot of changes in the area of social studies. And the state provides bids for review, but the approved lists come after our adoption process by statute. So we wanted to wait. That typically happens between April and May, maybe even June. And we wanted to ensure that we had textbooks that were fully aligned with all the statutes or pending house bills, if they become statutes that we are teaching to the standards. And we're going to combine that adoption with science, K-12, which is right on target. Questions?
All right, we have an opportunity for a few questions. Board members, any questions? Board Member Anderson.
Thank you. You mentioned that we have several new courses that we are adopting textbooks for. Was that a Duval County Public Schools decision to bring in new courses?
Yeah, through the Chair to Board Member Anderson, those are actually new courses that came from the state.
And the new courses that were required for us to offer from the state, did that come with additional revenue for new textbooks to align to those courses?
So through the Board Chair to Board Member Anderson, these are new courses that are being offered. We choose to adopt particular courses and the funding is not additional.
Thank you.
Other board members, questions on this item? Board Member Joyce?
Yes, through the Chair to Ms. Renfro. When you were going over the membership to the committees who reviewed the textbooks, maybe I, maybe I interpreted this wrong, but it looked as if community members, there was only one community member, or maybe one of them was three. Or can you kind of give me an idea of how many community members engaged in this process?
Yeah. Through the Chair to Board Member Joyce. So we had a total of 17 that showed interest in participating. We had six that attended.
And how did you, how did you recruit community members for this process?
So we public noticed the meeting, but we also reached out to our district area SAT councils, our DAC. We also sent word through all of our PTA. And we also sent out word through our NAACP Education Committee. We public noticed it on our district website. So trying to reach all of those stakeholders that are connected to students within our community.
And the final question related to that topic is, do we cap community members? Or do we cap these committees in any sense?
Through the Chair to Board Member Joyce, we do not cap them at this time. There is nothing in statute that would cap them.
Thank you for that question. Other questions? Board Member Hershey.
You may have said this, Ms. Renfro, but just to clarify and highlight, my question is, were the textbooks that reviewed, were they selected from a list that was pre-approved by the Department of Education?
Through the Chair to Board Member Hershey. So the, the state sends bids and they review curriculums. And they send out the review list. So we take that review list, that bid list, and that's how we reach out to vendors. The list doesn't actually get approved. The final approval process happens between April and sometimes early June from the state.
Okay, so just to follow, I just want to clarify that the books that we reviewed and selected were based upon a list provided to us from the Department of Education?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I just think that that's important for people to know and I appreciate that clarification.
Excellent. Thank you for that question. Board Member Jones.
Yes, thank you, Chairman Renfro. Those meetings are, to reemphasize, those meetings are public meetings. Is that correct?
Through the Chair to Board Member Jones, yes, they are publicly noticed. And they're within the sunshine.
Do you allow for public comment?
Through the Chair to Board Member Jones, within those meetings, it's, it's a review. So they are working, they sign an affidavit, they are working within as reviewers. If they wish to be observers, which that is completely, that is welcome, they are seated and they are observing.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Any other questions from the group? Yeah, thank you so much for, for this great information. And I know it's always an interesting time to figure out. And I will ask the question, I know it's always about the transition from one sort of set of curriculum to the next. How does this shape up as we're sort of transitioning from one grouping to this, this election that this group has made?
So we are transitioning to all new standards in reading and mathematics. So we'll begin that, we actually have begun that training for those. K-2 right now is engaged in learning through the best standards. We began training last summer for those in grades 3 through 12 because that transition will be beginning with the new school year. So a whole training module is planned beginning in the spring in addition to the, the introductory trainings that have taken place.
Excellent. And I say that because I know we were actually ahead of the curve when it came to looking at and preparing our teachers and our staff for best standards because we knew it was coming.
We were, yeah, we were one of the first districts to begin.
Noted. So yeah, thank you so much and we'll definitely, once again, this is what, this action and then the action that's happened in Tallahassee may also affect some of the curriculum based on what we're saying too. So we want to make sure we're keeping a close eye. But thank you so much for this information. Very helpful. Excellent. We, as a part of order, I'm actually going to flip-flop. I know we're on public comment, but we do have students here from our student, student government. And I want to make sure that we get them up so they can go do homework if they need to or whatnot. So I'm going to have the JAGs students, we have two representatives this evening that are going to come forward. We have Wisdom, Serenity Van, and Finch Baloo who are here. Are you both here? They're both coming up. Let's give them a round of applause as they come forward. These are our student representatives. student representatives. Thank you all so much for being here. That sounded worse than it was. All right, Wisdom and Finch, the floor, the floor is yours.
So to the Honorable Chairman Darryl Willey, to the Honorable Board Members, and to the Superintendent, Dr. Diana Green, good evening. My name is Wisdom Serenity Van, and I am the Senior Class President at Donna Cookman School of the Medical Arts.
Good evening, my name is Finch Valu, and I-
You can pull the mic down, I'm sorry, you didn't have to put your mask.
My name is Finch Valu, and I am the President of the Terry Parker High School Pride Club.
There it is.
So, mental health and suicide prevention has always been a challenge for our generation to not only discuss, but to control. And we have a good way of hiding our emotions and our thoughts. So the best way for us to let our thoughts out is through talking to other students that are going through similar issues that we are going through. So at last week's JAGs meeting, we talked about how State and College Preparatory School does their mental health awareness, like Wellness Wednesdays. So they do it by taking the entire day to do tasks that are calming and will help them resolve their stress. And us JAGs members thought that that was a great idea, but the only problem that we came upon was not every high school can do this, because some high schools are larger than others. So we thought to target certain grade levels that produce the most stress, like sophomores and juniors. So we say that because once those sophomores and juniors get into their senior year of high school, they will be able to have a more balanced mind and be able to be eager to want to go to college. And to not ostracize other grade levels, we thought to have a wellness course that teaches about mental health and also life coaching skills. So that way, when these kids transition to college and when they go into the real world, they'll be able to handle all of life's challenges that comes their way. And we understand that the district leadership is trying their best to help our mental health. So we thought that, well, we learned about the GROW program that is ran by youth, and it's coming out in this spring, actually. And us JAGs members believe that for us students to really pay attention to mental health awareness, they should have small flyers with QR codes that just shows a quick statement about what the QR code provides, and also what does this QR code help us with our mental stability? And other than that, you guys are doing a great job helping us with our mental health. And I now pass on the floor to Finch.
Good afternoon. I wanted to mention first what we did as a starting activity at our last JAGs meeting, led by Ms. Katrina Taylor, the Director of School Behavioral Health. Half of the room was asked to watch a video about suicide prevention that used spoken poetry and visual storytelling, while the other half was told to close their eyes and listen. I was on the listening side, and listening to the video rather than watching it gave me the opportunity to hear the emotion behind the speaker's voice more thoroughly. It also made the story feel more personal rather than a telling of someone else's life, and I could relate it more to my own experience. The reason I'm bringing this up is because I believe that this is the best approach to mental health and wellness in a school environment by being interactive. My peers and I are usually very uninterested in things like breathing exercises and sort of temporary solutions to mental well-being. Exercises like what we did with the video are more thought-provoking and give students the opportunity to discuss their feelings and emotions regarding a certain topic. I also wanted to mention how we at JAGs agreed that the student evaluation of teachers can lead to improvements in the classroom, and how most of us as students found that the teachers that we learn the best from are the teachers that took criticism and adjusted the ways that they taught to better fit their students. I believe that teachers should be encouraged to listen to their students' feedback on things like homework, teaching techniques, and grading systems whenever possible. This leads to healthier, happier, more stable kids who are actually learning the material and facilitating good relationships with their teachers rather than stressing. It's imperative to a healthy school environment to have honest communication between the student body and the staff, and real evaluations from students is a simple, effective way to approach that. We're so thankful to be supported by the Duval County Public School Board on this journey of positive thinking, self-love, and embracement, not only now, but for the future ahead of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Wisdom and Finch, thank you so much for being here. We truly, yes, yes. We value your words and you all's leadership at your schools and collectively as JAGs. So we thank you so much. We really appreciate hearing student voice when we're at these meetings. So thank you so much, Wisdom and Finch. We are going to move on to public comment of our agenda. The School Board welcomes your comments on matters that are before the Board for consideration. It is not the Board's intent to respond this evening, but to use the input in our deliberations. To give everyone appropriate respect and courtesy, we ask that the audience refrain from audible comments or applause. When you come to the microphone, please state your name for the record. Please limit your comments to three minutes. When the green light in front of me starts blinking, you will have a minute remaining. When the light turns yellow, you will have thirty seconds remaining. When it turns red and the buzzer sounds, your time will be up. If your concerns exceed that time, you may present written comments to the Board. Board policy provides an orderly and efficient meeting without disruption by words or actions. You are asked to refrain from references to specific individuals and to follow expectations for civil discourse. In an effort to mitigate against the spread of COVID-19, we have placed hand sanitizer and disinfectant wipes at the podium. We ask that each speaker wipe down the microphone and podium before they address the Board. Please remember that speaker cards were only accepted until 6:20 PM. Thank you for taking time to address the Board. Vice Chair, Coker Daniel, I will give the floor to you.
Thank you, Board Chair Willey. We have thirteen speakers for this evening. We'll start with Dr. Lori Boilini, followed by Sunny Bartley.
Using a lot of these lately, it seems like. Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. I was able to stay for the entire, I was here for the whole meeting so far, and it's been really an enjoyable experience, especially that math presentation, Ms. Renfro. So, but honestly, to be here for those awards, it just kind of took me back. It's so, it's not often that we, we can take the time to recognize excellence in education. And it sounds like you have so many good things going on and such great examples. So, so in that same vein, I approach you tonight to remind you of the Gladys Pryor Award. I'm from University of North Florida, I think my name was said. So Dr. Laura Boilini. I'm a Clinical Assistant Professor, and I'm also a Program Director for the Masters in Educational Leadership. So send anyone my way if they're interested in becoming a principal. So we have many wonderful Duval teachers in our program at this time. So when I'm here though for this evening, and I will leave a flyer for the Board, the Gladys Pryor Award, I'm so honored to be part of this committee, because when they asked me, I just said yes right away. Because this award is, is, is just that, it recognizes excellence in teaching. And it's a surprise award. So you cannot nominate yourself, and someone else nominates you. And we get wonderful letters written by students and parents and principals and other teachers about their colleagues. In order to be eligible for the award, you have to have taught at least ten years, but not all in the Duval County system. And the award is given to four teachers each year in Duval County. And when I tallied it up, I think we're up to about seventy-five that have already been. So it's a yearly, it's a yearly wonderful opportunity to recognize excellence in teaching in Duval County. The award, if you're not familiar, started many years ago, and it was brought to UNF on the behalf of Mr. Gilchrist Berg. And he created this award, the Gladys Pryor Award. You can imagine, that was one of his impactful teachers. We've all had them. And Gladys Pryor was his fourth grade teacher. And Mr. Berg was very inspired by her and took lessons into his life later on. When she was eighty-eight years old, he decided to create this award. So of course, she's not with us anymore, but she was able to see the award come to fruition. So, so with that, I will leave some flyers. We are taking nominations through March fourth. And it's just a simple letter telling the story, telling the tale. How did this teacher inspire you? What have they done for you? And as I said, I hope we've all had them, and we have them every day in our lives. So, so I will leave that with you. It's, it's kind of a simple procedure to nominate someone, and we would welcome those nominations. And I'm looking, I'm watching the flashing, and I think I'm good. So, okay. I don't know if you have any questions, but I will leave this little folder with you. I was kind of just doodling on it, so I'll leave it there.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
And before our next figure, we're gonna, I see the lights flashing, we're gonna give our, our staff a chance to- fix that. While we're doing that, I'll allow, Dr. Coker, you can call the next one.
Sunny, so we'll have Sunny Bartley, followed by Ginger Peacock Preston.
Good evening. All lives do matter, not just Black, Asian, Hispanics, gays, or lesbians. We shouldn't highlight or give preferential treatment to any group or person. I do not, I do not go around announcing I'm a heterosexual, therefore I do not need to know your sexual preference. Furthermore, I do not condone bullying, I denounce assaults and violence, violence towards any people or person. All criminal acts should have a swift and harsh penalty without special treatment of a singled-out case, because evil is evil, no matter who it's towards. The care and safety of all children should always be the general focus, and no one group singled out for a political agenda. Plain and simple, equal justice for all under the law. I believe in traditional marriage, one man, one woman, and holy matrimony. If you are, if, if you're, it's your prerogative, if you are two consenting same-sex adults having relations, as long as you're not abusing underage children sexually, physically, emotionally, there will be no backlash from me nor the law. I want to be clear, just because a person disagrees with your lifestyle does not mean we hate the LGBTQ community, pansexual, or any other pronoun one might label themselves at the moment. With that being said, I will not affirm, legitimize, nor celebrate any of the lifestyles just mentioned. Again, that does not mean I hate you. You have a right, you have a right to be what you want to be, and I have a right to disagree. This is the definition of free speech, not hate speech. In my opinion, the nineties Chicago Bulls was the greatest team of all times. One reason, Michael Jordan. The Bulls had just acquired Dennis Rodman for his incredible defensive and rebounding ability. However, Rodman was known for his colorful personality and defiant temperament, which generated a conversation between he and Jordan. Jordan would relay this message to Rodman. He said, "We want you, but we don't need you. I don't care what you do outside this arena, but when you come to the arena, you come to play basketball." The Bulls would go on to win three more consecutive titles with Dennis Rodman. Let's assess the parallel between the two sources to obtain a moral common ground, the Jordan rules and educations. When, when anyone is on a basketball team, you come to play basketball and nothing else. When anyone attends school, you come to get educated by curriculum like math, English, reading, and nothing else. It is not the job of academia to indoctrinate our children with the school's ideals. That's the parent's job. It's imperative that the schools advocate teaching them skills to become productive citizens for our, for our economy, to provide for themselves and for a family. Anything outside of this causes confusion for impressionable, immature boys and girls that create sexual assault incidents like the one we saw recently in Virginia's Loudoun County Public Schools. What's the, what's the moral of the story? Identity politics is the playground for Marxism, and it's killing our country. May God bless America. Thank you.
We will now have Ginger Peacock Preston, followed by Monique Sampson.
Hi, good to see you tonight. Thanks for having me and being able to speak. My name is Ginger Peacock Preston, and I am a lifelong Jacksonvilleian. I have spent the majority of my life as an educator, mainly littles, early childhood. I spent most of my career either at Jacksonville University, and then I ended up at Kids Hope Alliance. I even had three kids go through the Duval County School System, and they are all, thanks to the system and many others, great adults. I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of Seaside Charter Consortium. I'm on the board there. And it is a Waldorf school, and it is a very innovative environment for children to grow and learn. I support its mission, but personally, I have two grandsons there, which gives me, you know, that edge to, to be committed to the school. The, one of my grandsons has some unique needs, and they are truly being met at that school, and I am so grateful for that. And I'm grateful to them. I, over the last few years, the leadership of the school has changed. And as a new board member, and a really a full new board, we are really excited about the direction that we're heading. We have, we're working collaboratively with Duval County Public School and the, the office there. And it's been an interesting journey, working together and making sure that all the children that we serve are doing their very best and going to be successful in school. We also want to make sure and are committed to continuing this relationship and strengthening it, and to making sure that the, all of the monies that we, that we get, that we are thoughtful servants of that, and use those funds carefully. Thank you for your time. Thank you for support of our school and the school system that we have. And we look forward to continuing the relationship. So thank you very much.
Thank you. We will have Monique Sampson, followed by Brian Neal Jefferson.
All right, hello. First, I would like to say, please put a vending machine on the first floor. It might be the, the pregnancy talking, but please. I am starving. But anyway, my name is Monique Sampson. I am with the Duval Core. I am also a Duval County Public School teacher. I teach US history, which is actually a really fun and interactive and amazing subject to teach. I'm here to kind of discuss COVID measures. Unfortunately, two weeks ago, I contracted COVID as a result of one of my students giving it to me. It was not a very fun experience at all whatsoever. The first two and a half days of having COVID, I was not able to eat, I was not able to sleep. I am pregnant. My daughter is very active. She's a very active baby. She moves all the time. However, during my experience with COVID, she was not moving at all. Unfortunately, I could not get into the OB-GYN's office because I was positive for COVID. So I hope my daughter's okay. I have, I have an appointment now that I am past my symptoms on Monday. However, the current mitigation measures that are currently in place are simply not working. I thought that things were turning the corner in the summer. I was so happy when the, when the cases were going down and my students were feeling much safe and excited about the school year. But here we are in the school year, having the same issues. Omicron is ravaging through our schools in a crazy and insane way. Some of the things that I've seen and heard as an educator have been completely heartbreaking. I have one student who actually lost two loved ones in the period of a week. She has not been the same student since this happened. I really hope that she is seeking therapy, but unfortunately, her parents are not able to afford it at this time. But I hope that she can get some resources that are helpful. So when we're talking about mental health and we're talking about the health of our students, you have to understand that there is no business as usual, because everybody around them is dying, unfortunately. And as educators, we can only do so much. I love my students. I try my best to teach the content, do what I'm supposed to do, and also be a listening ear for them to tell me how they're feeling. But it just sucks that they're just going through all of these things. And it sucks that teachers, faculty, and staff are going through all of these things. I feel like as a teacher, my back is against the wall, because at this point, I feel like you all are asking me to choose between the health of my baby and my safety, and choose between a profession that I absolutely love. I'm a Duval native. I stayed here to teach here because I love the city so much. So please, the mitigation strategies are quite simple. Accessible, accessible masks for parents that want their kids to wear them. At my school, parents want their kids to wear them, but they cannot afford to spend ten dollars for an N-95 mask. And our school is not providing masks, and I know other schools are not providing masks as well. I will also say to please do some education around options that we have, such as vaccines with parental consent. There are many mitigation strategies that we are proposing, and you can see more in the press conference that we did today. Thank you so much for your time. And once again, please get some vending machines on the first floor.
Thank you. We'll now have Brian Neal Jefferson, followed by Pastor Kimberly Pullings. And there the snacks. Would win, yeah. Again, Brian Neal, Neal Jefferson, followed by Pastor Kimberly Pullings.
Good evening. My name is Brian Neal Jefferson II. My address is on file, and I am with Core, and I'm a teacher here in the district. And I must say, when I walked into the meeting today, I felt very safe. I saw that everybody was social distanced. You guys got the tape on the chairs to make sure people aren't sitting too close. And I see we've got the clear plastic shields to make sure people are, you know, not spreading any germs, you know, just through like talking and maybe like making any other kind of audible or verbal- or verbal or oral emission, I'll say. And I was very happy about this, because this is actually the safest I've felt in a Duval County building in about two years. And I couldn't help but ask myself, well, why can't we do this in the schools? It's like, if we are just looking at the bar graphs like we were provided earlier in the meeting, it doesn't look so bad. But if you're on the front lines in the classroom, and you're actually with the students who are suffering with this, who have lost loved ones, who are currently sick but can't stay home, who don't have masks, and who are just feeling the crush that we're all feeling from the pandemic, it's a different story. And we saw like unprecedented amounts of absences, not just from teachers, but from students as well. Like, I'm teaching half a class for about two or three weeks straight, and we've got kids who just can't do their work, and it's definitely starting to affect their grades. It's starting to really be bad for their mental health, and of course, their social development. And it's like, we already have this teacher and sub shortage, and I just feel like we can be doing a lot more to be protecting our teachers. And it's just, a lot of what we've been seeing, a lot of the suffering, is very preventable. And you all have shown me that tonight. And just the way that the meeting was social distanced, and we've had barriers set up. I think that a lot of teachers and students would feel a lot safer if we had these things in the classrooms again, like we did last year. And I don't understand exactly why we got rid of them. And I'm a history teacher, and I know a lot of people that teach math and science, and a point that's kind of been starting to boil over with them is, they're teaching math and science, and then we are ignoring that same math and science now that it's relevant. Because if we're really looking at the science behind the virus and the statistics, we would know that we still do need a whole lot of provisions to protect ourselves. And it's like, how are we supposed to teach our students that these things are important and important to know and learn, because they're going to be useful in the real world if, we're not using them in the real world, have a good night.
Thank you. We'll now have Pastor Kimberly Pullings, followed by Carnell Oliver.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Pastor Kimberly Pullings. I'm with Live Church here in Jacksonville, Florida. But while I'm a pastor, I'm coming to you today as a mother. In May of this year, my husband and I will have graduated six children from Duval County Public Schools. The last time I was here, there were doctors and nurses coming from local hospitals, speaking on behalf of the patients. Then Superintendent Green and the board made the right decision, and they instituted masks in the schools. We need to make the right decision today for our children. Our nonprofit, Live CDC, along with our partners, Amazon, Dedicated Senior Centers, First Coast Black Nurses, prior to the Christmas break and the week of their return, delivered at least 5,000 masks to various schools throughout Jacksonville. We are currently having masks and disinfectant delivered as of today, this week. Today, the Duval Public School honored the finalists for teachers, Assistant Principal and Principal, and the Principal of the Year Award. But today, we need to not only honor them, but show them we are concerned about their health and safety. We must ensure our teachers and their students are protected from COVID. We can and we must honor their work. They deserve the honor for their commitment to excellence, and so much so that we must also honor their health. We must also honor them by protecting their students as well. My son, a student, a senior, went back to school this year, decided to go back after we wanted to keep him home so he could be with his friends and graduate. He came home Thursday positive with COVID. My husband is a paraplegic. I'm a first responder from 9/11. We're both immunocompromised. We cannot afford to get sick. So the issue that we have here is that teachers shouldn't have to attend the funerals of their colleagues. Right? They shouldn't console, have to console the grieving students who believe that they brought COVID home and, and they caused the death of their loved ones. Why should they bear the burden? The district should bear the burden of keeping them safe, knowing that this highly contagious and without proper notification. We need to honor them today by making sure that we're honoring their lives. Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. We'll now have Carnell Oliver, followed by Chris Guerrieri.
Yes, my name is Carnell Oliver. Address is on file. I want to fundamentally, I'm more of a legislative kind of person. And when I deal with the floor of legislator, I want y'all to look at a couple of things. I listened to the presentation. One talked about mathematics. And a school board member, Anderson, asked the question about who's paying for what, dealing with the state's standard. And the one thing caught my ear is that we're paying for it. Where's our local control at? There's a bill in Tallahassee right now dealing with restore local freedom. It gets the governor, it gets the legislator out of our way, and let us make decisions on a local level that is more reflective of our values. So much of our power has been reduced to nothing, and everything has to come through the elect, come through the executive branch. Now, for some Republicans, they would say that we believe in small government, we believe in home rule. But why would people like Jason Fisher? Why would people like, God, I don't even want to say his name because I want to cuss, but he represents the South Side of town. So, Yarborough, voted in favor of reducing our local control. Now, I want 10 toes down. As much as I, as hard as I am on the city council, I asked for a resolution in committee today. I'm coming to y'all, asking for y'all to put their tack dogs on the floor of legislator and give us back our freedom to do what we need to do. Because if the state wants to set standards, they need to come off some money. But if they're not going to come off any money, they need to get the, out the way. Because they don't have no place in our community telling us what to do, and they're not giving us no money to pay for a lot of these things. And number two, I'm coming to y'all with, and I'm asking for you, and I'm going to be as nice as I possibly can. I want drop boxes at almost every high school in our community for this midterm election. I'm so tired of Governor DeSantis and his poor policies dealing with Stop the Woke Act and all this craziness and this foolishness. And a Black high school, a Black college in our community was threatened by a bomb. And this is the first day of Black history in my, everything in my mind is thinking about saying, and everything else. I want him gone, but the only way I can get him gone is I gotta get a high number of people participating in the process. Now, I've emailed y'all, and I emailed the supervisory election. That's on y'all.
Thank you. We'll now have Chris Guerrieri, followed by Margaret Yarborough.
Good evening, Chris Guerrieri. I want to talk about contract tracing and the legislative agenda, if I have time. At my school today, they sent out two emails saying we had two cases of COVID. I had seven kids absent today. I wonder if one of those kids could have been in one of my classes. I don't know, because nobody will tell me. For the last seven days, a coworker was out. My students attended his class every other day. They sent out an email blast saying he, a member of our community is out, didn't tell anybody who. We didn't tell the parents that one of their teachers or one of their, one of their, one of their adults was out. And I just think that's irresponsible. We, the Department of Health said, since parents make decisions after close contacts in quarantine, we're not going to tell them about those close contacts anymore. And the district, it seemed to me, shrugged. They said, well, we'll inform some parents, some students, once a week. But how is that allowing parents to make informed choices? And that's all we're asking. We all understand that the, that the state is onerous, the state has tied your hands. But why not allow parents to make informed choices? I really don't think that's too much to ask. I just want to talk about the legislative agenda. There's a lot of onerous bills going through Tallahassee right now. I think some of you might agree with me on that. But unfortunately, the district has been silent. I mean, school board members have been silent. And I get maybe collectively, you don't think it's appropriate to speak out against some of these bills. But individually, I mean, some of these bills have to really upset you. There's attacks on teachers' unions, and I haven't heard anything. There's attacks on teachers. I haven't heard anything. The whitewashing of teaching history, I haven't heard anything. The quote-unquote "don't say gay" bill, I haven't heard anything. Even, there's even bills that are attacking school board members. Some take away their salaries so they can monitor books, quote-unquote, and you haven't said anything. I think it's, as leaders of our community, it's up to you to educate the people and advocate for our public schools. You know, and I don't think that's asking too much either. I was part of the press conference today, and when we met to discuss our goals, we were like, give them low-hanging fruit. Give them things that they can grab and, and work with. And I think educating the public and advocating for our schools is a low-hanging fruit. I think letting parents be informed so they can make choices for themselves is low-hanging fruit as well. I get it, your job is hard. I get it, Tallahassee does not make it easier. But this is the job that you signed up for, and I kind of want you to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now have Margaret Yarborough, followed by Carmen Martinez.
Good evening. My name is Margaret Yarborough, and I'm a mom of two wonderful girls. I have several topics to address. First is the lack of transparency from DCPS when it comes to answering my questions. For example, I've been asking for months now questions related to the marketing and practices of LGBT ideologies in the school system. Questions like whether boys are allowed in girls' bathrooms. Which laws allow DCPS to affirm gender identity in kids? Which laws allow this information to be kept off student records and hidden from parents? Why does DCPS use the same rainbow symbol for the All In campaign as for the LGBT Support Guide? Why does it claim the rainbow logo represents all kids when it clearly does not? Why can't cross- or heterosexual safe space stickers be placed around school just like the LGBT rainbow stickers? The way DCPS evades questions leads me to believe that maybe DCPS is violating Parental and Civil Rights Act laws. Secondly, DCPS should not be involved in kids' healthcare, whether it's through Hazel Health or vaccine distribution. How will parents know if Hazel is discussing mental health, suicide, gender identity, or sex education with their child? How will parents know if their rights are being violated? What information is, what if information is intentionally left off charts so parents can't see what was discussed or prescribed? The Hazel form requires parents to opt out of services. Why do I have to do this? My kids are at school to learn, not for health services. If anything, it should be an opt-in-only form. Additionally, parents should always be present when health services are rendered, so mistakes aren't made like the flu shot that was wrongly given to a student this past year. Lastly, I want to bring up the travel ban we were hit with this past month. It caused a lot of needless stress with our all-state group from LaVilla, which was heading down to Tampa just a week later. Kids worked hard all last summer, auditioned, and were honored to be in these bands. Trip planning and reservations were made, money was spent, contracts were signed, hours were spent learning new music. Then, because of the unfounded, unscientific whims of DCPS, we were facing a forced last-minute cancellation. Thankfully, we were granted an exemption, but think about the disruption and stress this caused. Think about the kids who don't get exemptions. Omicron is in Jacksonville. If kids can go to school and attend concerts here, then surely they can go to Tampa. This is just another form of medical tyranny forced upon families by DCPS. These arbitrary and capricious rules need to stop now. If families want to take the supposed travel risk, then let them. Despite all this nonsense, the kids were incredible, and the performance was amazing. But I don't think kids will forget the wrong and harmful actions DCPS has taken against them over the last couple of years. Thank you.
We'll now have Carmen Martinez, followed by Katie McNeil.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Carmen Martinez, and I've served the community since 1987. I'm here tonight to urge the board not to listen to the demands of the Duval Corps Coalition, to revisit the mask issue, even if tomorrow is Groundhog Day. This is already a settled issue. The law has been finished. The kids do not have to wear masks. I object to the, to the teachers wearing masks, but that's not the issue today. I also do not think the board should waste time discussing this issue anymore. I'm also here to object to the, to the program that the board has tried to have about vaccines. These vaccines are toxic, and they are very harmful to children. There is a lot of data about this. This coupled with the fact that the children are at very little risk from COVID, very little, .01%, is just, the risk is so minimal of dying from COVID that it makes pushing their use at the schools a criminal act. These vaccines can cause myocarditis, as well as many other problems, not to mention sterility, and that is a great issue with children. Vaccines may have been okay for somebody who was 70, but for our children or for pregnant women, it is absolutely a crime. I refer to the data presented in the January 24 Senate Committee chaired by Senator Ron Johnson. This was televised and is available on the internet. Dr. Peter McCullough, Dr. Robert Malone, Dr. Michael Corey, and many other doctors presented data to the evidence of the COVID fraud that is going on and the vaccine toxicity. The biggest part of the fraud was the COVID testing for cases. Cases are not disease. Cases are just there to make this fear happen in the population. And the other lies that they told, that there was no treatment. There was always treatment. There was always treatment with ivermectin, with hydroxychloroquine. There has been documented treatment since March of 2020. There was always, now we're being told the vaccines would prevent infection, which they do not.
Thank you. We will now have Katie McNeil, followed by Lou Lincoln-Welgie.
My name is Katie McNeil, and I have a couple of questions about the math curriculum. I want to know what kind of misconceptions and preconceptions can you have in math? How can you possibly achieve equitable outcomes in math? Not everyone is going to achieve the same understanding, grades in math classes. It's not possible without changing grades. Financial literacy should not be an advanced math class. It should be something that you learn across multiple grades, because it's one of the most important things young adults need coming out of school. I want to know, why are there still mask-required signs on this building? They are not required. I can see that you all still are true believers in masks, but I must highlight, and will continue to do so until this changes, that we have yet to hear an apology from this board for their forced masking of children, nor has there been an apology about the wasting of taxpayer money for the legal fees due to the board's insistence that they should be allowed to override parental choice when it comes to whether their own children should wear a mask. There is never sound justification for this policy, and over the coming months and years, the whole concept will be revealed to be ridiculous, yet damaging. The CDC recently has all but admitted that cloth masks are pointless, while real-life data continues to show zero positive impact on SARS-CoV-2 cases from forced masking of children when compared to cases in mask-optional schools. The CDC also changed their guidance in September 2020 in regards to mask-wearing of teachers interacting with young children, learning to read, people who need to see the proper shape of the mouth for making vowel sounds, and students learning a new language, that they should wear clear masks so their mouths are visible. The continued forcing of masks on teachers is harming, learning for zero benefit for all Duval students. I made public comment a few months ago that we would likely see an increase in cases December through January, as would the Northern Latitude states, but the states further north would have their cases spike higher than Florida. As I predicted, New York, with a population of 2 million fewer people than Florida spiked on January 6, As I predicted, New York, with a population of 2 million fewer people than Florida spiked on January 6 with 87,000 new cases reported that day, while Florida peaked on January 9 with 77,000 new cases. So our peak was 20,000 cases lower despite a larger population. I'm not clairvoyant. It's just what the Hope Sensencur predicts for the behavior of respiratory viruses. Masking, vaccines, restrictions based on vaccine status, test and trace, none of this limits the number of cases. All of those are damaging authoritarian rules for nothing. And it remains critical that people who advocated for them admit they were wrong and apologize at a minimum. You owe apologies to the parents and the children and the taxpayers. Everyone on Earth will catch SARS-CoV-2. We cannot stop that, but thank God the state of Florida has stopped you. There was literally an outbreak in Antarctica. Everybody is going to catch this virus. We can only layer more damage on top of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Lou Welge, and I didn't see, I did not see him get up. I think I saw him leave. But his item was guidance counseling, and our last speaker will be Tim Miller.
Good evening. My name is Tim Miller. I missed last month's meeting. I apologize. And you guys were talking about the Student Progression Plan, one of my favorite topics over the last probably four or five years. I've been asking for a change in that, to say that the teachers must provide the documentation to the administration. And it's in there now. I don't know when it was put in there because it wasn't redlined last month, but it now says that the teachers must provide that documentation to the administration. I do appreciate that, and I just wanted to say thank you and give credit where credit is due. So, thank you very much.
That concludes our speakers for this evening.
Thank you for those who came for public comment. We'll now ask any parent organizations who wish to address the board. Do I see any parent organizations?
Good evening. Dr. Green, Chairman Willie, school board members. My name is Felita Tutt, past president of Duval County Council PTA. The Duval County Council PTA Student Leadership has met a few times, and will meet again soon to discuss concerns of students that the students have addressed some concerns and would like to meet with some of the school board members and Dr. Green. So we have invited you and invited some of you, and hopefully that you will be attending a meeting via Zoom with us. DCCPTA is excited to announce that our Reflections Program was a big success, and we had 40 Award Excellence winners that have moved forward to the Florida PTA Reflections for Judging. We will hold our Reflection Celebration Virtual in March. At that time, we will recognize students' achievements. Our National PTA Founders' Day is February 17. We will celebrate the work of our founders, Alan McClendon-Burney, Selena Sloan-Butler, and Phoebe Pearson-Hearst, who wanted to better the lives of every child in education, safety, and health. This day is a time to reflect and take pride in our achievements and renew our commitment to be a powerful voice for all children, be a relevant resource for parents, and also be a strong advocate for public education. There are some great YouTube videos that you can watch on our National PTA website in reference to Founders' Day. DCCPTA will celebrate Founders' Day at our next general meeting in February, at which time we will recognize past presidents. If some of you don't know, the first PTA in the state of Florida started right here in Duval, at Westside Riverside. Westside, yeah, Riverside. West Riverside. Some of our DCCPTA board members attended the Florida PTA Legislative Conference this past week, and Virtual, and our president Kate Hawkins attended in person, and she traveled back today. So some of you that are heading there soon will miss her because she's back now. Our advocacy chair Melissa Daniels is keeping us informed on different bills that relate to education, and Florida PTA is keeping an eye on many bills. Our Nominating Committee was elected in January and started the process of seeking candidates to serve on our Executive Board for 2022-2023 school year. And that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tutt. Do we have other parent organizations in the building? Not seeing any. We heard from our Student Government Association, Wisdom Serenity Van, and Bench Valu from both Darnell Cookman and Terry Parker earlier. We thank them for their time. We'll move on to comments from employee organizations. Do we have any employee organizations that wish to address the board? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to approval of minutes. The Duval County School Board approved the minutes from the meetings listed in the agenda item. There's a lot. September 14, 2021 Board Workshop. September 28, 2021 Emergency Board Meeting. October 5, 2021 Regular Board Meeting. October 11, 2021 Special Board Meeting. October 12, 2021 Audit Selection Committee Meeting. October 18, 2021 Special Committee Meeting. October 26, 2021 Special Board Meeting. November 1, 2021 Special Committee Meeting. November 2, 2021 Regular Board Meeting. November 8, 2021 Special Committee Meeting. November 16, 2021 Agenda Committee Meeting. November 16, 2021 Board Workshop. November 17, 2021 Policy Handbook Review Committee. December 7, 2021 Regular Board Meeting. December 14, 2021 Agenda Committee Meeting. December 14, 2021 Board Workshop. December 16, 2021 Special Committee Meeting. December 21, 2021 Special Meeting Litigation Shade. January 11, 2022 Board Workshop. January 11, 2022 Special Board Meeting, Final Order. January 18, 2022 Board Workshop. January 18, 2022 Agenda Committee Meeting. Ask for motion.
So moved.
Second.
Booed by Board Member Vice Chair Coker. Second by Board Member Jones. Any discussion? Seeing none, call for your vote. By your action, you have approved and passed this item 7-0. Moving on to the approval consent agenda. Are there any items to place on the consent agenda or items for discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask for your motion.
So moved. Second.
Booed by Board Member Anderson. Second by Board Member Hershey. Any discussion? Seeing none, call for your vote. By your action, this passes 7-0. Moving on to discussion items. Academic Services, Public Hearing and Vote, Adoption of District-Wide Mathematics Instructional Materials. I'll ask Dr. Green to read the recommendation.
That the Duval County School Board conduct a public hearing and vote to approve the adoption and purchase of the following mathematics instructional materials. Number one, Shahar Raji, Ph.D., Sadaka Walter, Ph.D., Seeley Cathy, E.D.D., Toby Sherrill, M.E.D., Zeig Dinah, M.E.D., McGraw-Hill LLC, Florida Revealed Math Grade K-5, 2023, period. Number two, Barry Robert III, Champagne Zachary, Mylou Eric, Chalak Ray, Jane Randall, Charles, Jonathan Fennel, Francis Saval Learning Company LLC, Envision Florida Best, Mathematics Grades 6-8, Course Group 2023, Choice Number One. Number three, Shahar Raji, Ph.D., Sadaka Walter, Ph.D., Seeley Cathy, E.D.D., Toby Sherrill, M.E.D., Zeig Dinah, M.E.D., McGraw-Hill LLC, Florida Revealed Math Grade 6-8, 2023, Choice Number Two. Number four, Shahar Raji, Ph.D., Sadaka Walter, Ph.D., Seeley Cathy, E.D.D., Toby Sherrill, M.E.D., Zeig Dinah, M.E.D., McGraw-Hill LLC, Florida Revealed Math Grade 6 Accelerated, 2023, Choice One. Number five, Barry Robert III, Champagne Zachary, Mylou Eric, Sharid Chalak Ray, Jane Randall, Charles Jonathan Fennel, Francis Saval Learning Company LLC, Envision Florida Best, Mathematics Grade 6 Accelerated, 2023, Choice Number Two. Number six, Barry Robert III, Champagne Zachary, Mylou Eric, Chalak Ray, Jane Randall, Charles Jonathan Fennel, Francis Saval Learning Company LLC, Envision Florida Best, Mathematics Grade 7 Accelerated, 2023, Choice One. Number seven, Sharav Raji, Ph.D., Cicada Walter, Ph.D., Silly Cathy, E.D.D., Toby Sherrill, M.E.D., Zeig Dinah, M.E.D., McGraw-Hill LLC, Florida Revealed Math Grade 7 Accelerated, 2023, Choice Two. Number eight, Kuco Al, Ph.D., Kennedy Dan, Ph.D., Mylou Eric, E.D.D., Thomas Christine, Ph.D., Zabak Rosemary, Ph.D., Saval Learning Company LLC, Florida Revealed Algebra 1, 2023, Choice Number One. Number nine, Shahar Raji, Ph.D., Cicada Walter, Ph.D., Seeley Cathy, E.D.D., Toby Sherrill, M.E.D., Zeig Dinah, M.E.D., McGraw-Hill LLC, Envision Florida Best, Mathematics Algebra 1, 2023, Choice Two. Number 10, Lori Boswell Larson, Ron National Geographic Learning Singage, Florida Best Standard for Math Algebra II with Cal Chat and Cal View, 2023, Choice One. Number 11, Kuco Al, Ph.D., Kennedy Dan, Ph.D., Mylou Eric, E.D.D., Thomas Christine, Ph.D., Zabak Rosemary, Ph.D., Saval Learning Company LLC, Envision Florida Math Mathematics Algebra II, 2023, Choice Two. Number 12, Shahar Raji, Ph.D., Cicada Walter, Ph.D., Seeley Cathy, E.D.D., Toby Sherrill, M.E.D., Zeig Dinah, M.E.D., McGraw-Hill LLC, Florida Revealed Geometry, 2023, Choice One. Number 13, Kuco Al, Ph.D., Kennedy Dan, Ph.D., Mylou Eric, E.D.D., Thomas Christine, Ph.D., Zabak Rosemary, Ph.D., Saval Learning Company LLC, Envision Florida Best Mathematics Geometry, 2023, Choice Two. Number 14, Blitzer Bob Saval Learning Company LLC, Algebra and Trigonometry, 7E-C2, 2022, Choice One. Number 15, Daniels, Callie Hornsby, John Lau, Margaret Schrader, goodness, Mr. Schrader, you're part of this. Schrader, David Saval Learning Company LLC, College Algebra and Trigonometry, 7E-C2021, Choice Two. Number 16, River Robert Sagah Richard, National Geographic Learning Singage, Financial Algebra, Advanced Algebra with Financial Applications Tax Code Update Plus MindTap 2023. Number 17, Triola Mario Saval Learning Company LLC, Elementary Statistics 14E-C2022, Choice One. Number 18, Bach David Saval Learning Company LLC, Stats in Your World, 3E-C2020, Choice Two. Number 19, Bach David Bullard Floyd DeVoe Richard Vellaman Paul Saval Learning Company LLC, Stats Modeling the World, 5E-C2019. Number 20, Blitzer Robert Saval Learning Company LLC, Precalculus, 7E-C2022. 21, Boardman Michael Daniel Basad, Demania Franklin Kennedy David Waits Burke Saval Learning Company LLC, Calculus Graphical Numerical Algebra Algebraic, 6E-C2020.
Can you repeat that, please?
Oh, my goodness. Now, we'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak to this item? We'll close the public hearing. Oh, 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 I'm sorry. Do I have to reopen it again? I closed it. We're good.
My name is Tim Miller again. Going through this, and I understand that choosing a curriculum is very complicated, very detailed. It's also kind of specified by the state. I understand that. Presentation earlier on this, which was very good, I appreciate the details behind it. One of the points that was made that we need to ensure the teachers have the resources right there, and they don't have to hunt for them. And I agree. As a husband of a teacher, I can't tell you how often Darlene is home researching things because she needs additional support material to help some students. So going through all the graphs, there's one section that consistently has a lot of red, ELL and ESE. On average, over 30% does not meet expectations. Another 23% partially meets expectations. That's over 50% that really doesn't meet the expectations for ESE math curriculum across K-3 seniors. One of them in particular, math for data and financial literacy. 16.7% partially meets it. 83.3% does not meet the expectations. How are your ESE kids and your ELL kids going to understand this material if almost 95% of it doesn't meet the needs? That's unacceptable. And some people will say, well, those kids aren't going to be in the advanced classes anyway. That is not true. Most of you up there, I'm sure you already know that. Okay? My kid was autistic. He was in precal. Okay? They can do the work if they have the supports. If you don't give them the supports, you're failing them. They're not failing. We have to make sure that they have the material that meets their needs. And if it doesn't, the district needs to come behind and tell those teachers, here are additional supports. Here's what they need so we don't have 83% of their curriculum not meeting needs for a certain segment of the population. Says every class, every student. Well, you've got a lot of ESE students that are included in that, and we need to make sure they're cared for and they're treated appropriately and not like second-class citizens. Because when they see that, that's how they're going to feel. So we need to make sure that we're giving them the support that they need and giving the teachers the support they need to educate them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Is there anyone else before I pick this gavel up who wishes to speak to this item? Now seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Ask for a motion.
So moved. Second.
Booed by Board Member Hershey. Second by Board Member Anderson. Now I'll ask any board members wishing to speak to this item. Board Member Hershey, then Board Member Anderson.
Through the cheer to Dr. Green, I would like to hear a response to the concern that was raised by Mr. Miller. I think that every district that's represented up here on the board has ELL students as well as ESE students, and the concern that he raised for me would make me not support this approval. So I would like to know what our answer is in response to giving support for English-language learners in ESE. So I would like to know what our answer is in response to giving support for English language learners and ESE students.
Through the chair, we will give two answers. I will answer first, and then I will let Ms. Remfro come behind me. First and foremost, through these textbooks adoption, we are choosing from the state list. Secondly, I will just be open and transparent. It is very hard for any textbook to meet every single category. It does not matter whether it's math or ELA. They just cannot write a book that's going to address every single issue, whether it's ELL or ESE. Or if we're looking for, even though we talk about the best standards, they just don't write textbooks to meet every single category to a level that would be at a very high level. So that's why we have to add additional support resources on top of that. So I will let Ms. Remfro add to that, but that's why we purchase supplemental materials. Because a core textbook is not going to address every single category or every single area. And for our ESE students, they're not a monolithic group. We have SLD students. We have students that have speech. We have students that have, they are some on autistic spectrum, but yet they're in inclusive classrooms. So textbooks just cannot meet that level of granular detail to address every type of ESE student. So again, that's why we bring in other materials, supplemental materials. Ms. Remfro.
Through the chair to Board Member Hershey. Dr. Green, you did such a great job. But that's why we have curriculum guides. Whenever there are holes in curriculum, we fill them with resources, with processes, with guidance to teachers that they can find easily. And if we are at a point we also need to provide supplements, that's what we do. Just as Dr. Green said, we have a very comprehensive review process. There are many districts that don't look as deeply as we do in those areas. And because it's very important to us. So we provide both of those through curriculum guides and through supplemental materials.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Thank you, Board Member Hershey. Board Member Anderson?
My question was answered.
It was. All right, Dr. Coker.
Through the chair, either to Dr. Green or Ms. Remfro. Can you talk a little bit about once these materials, should we vote and approve them tonight, hit the ground about training as it relates to different teachers at different levels and different types of classrooms? Is it a one-size-fits-all model? How do we differentiate those types of things?
Through the chair to Dr. Coker, Board Member Dr. Coker. The training is not one-size-fits-all. It is for by grade, well, when we get to high school, it's by subject and by course. So the Algebra One teachers are not mixed in with the geometry teachers. It's very specified. It's also specified by grade level. So we may have training that it could be okay to have first and second, but really, every textbook is for each grade level. And so that training would be specific for that grade level. As well as ESE would have additional training for ESE teachers. But again, I will allow Ms. Remfro to add.
Great job. Also for administrators, for first-year novice teachers versus experienced teachers as well. Because it's important that they see that their time is well-valued and used.
Board Member Anderson?
Sorry, I didn't want to make one comment because we had some conversation about this. I know I followed up with Dr. Green about when these materials would be available to our teachers. And I learned that we can't order them before a certain date and that it takes some time for them to come in. And so since we're having a conversation about this, if you wouldn't mind, Dr. Green or Ms. Remfro, whoever wants to be able to answer, explain a little bit about why sometimes it takes a while before these materials are in the hands of teachers in their print form.
Thank you. Through the chair to Board Member Anderson. As I stated in my email to you, we are not allowed to spend next year's dollars until April first. So this adoption is for next school year, therefore, we're using next school year's dollars. We can't spend them before April first. Therefore, April first is your beginning, first date that you can order these materials. And that order goes through the Florida Textbook Depository. Well, the Florida Textbook Depository is serving all sixty-seven districts. And it takes literally months to put in an order. Well, we're one of the larger school districts, so anything we put in, you might as well just start hoping that month four, you can start receiving something. So that was in the pre-pandemic era. Now that we are having supply chain issues, we hope, and we will be sending up prayers, that August first, we will get our materials. That's why it's so important to have the digital portion, because they can have access to that after April first, once we may put in that order. But the physical textbooks themselves, our goal is hopefully we will have them here by August first. But again, that was before we had supply chain issues. We were pretty much guaranteed to have them by August first. The other issue we're facing is that we no longer want all this to come to our warehouse. We want them to deliver those books directly to each school. So imagine now the shipping and handling cost that has just increased for the district to get this to the school so that it doesn't sit in our warehouse waiting for us to have to then disperse it out. We are now trying to be more efficient. No, send it directly to the school so that the school, who is there, who knows how many books they need, who knows, can go through all the invoicing and work with the district to get that information back to the district. That's what we'll be facing this school year.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I just know that there are a lot of teachers and even building leaders sometimes and people that hear out in the community, well, they didn't even get us our stuff. And that is not the intention of this board or the district. We try to be as accommodating as possible and take advantage of the online materials in case you're bored this summer.
Appreciate that clarity and expectation. Board Member Joyce?
Yes, through the chair to Dr. Green. I first want to say thank you to Mr. Miller for addressing this issue because I think not, I wasn't the only board member that noticed that. And the fact that you would bring that before the board is important. As a previous teacher in my previous life and as an inclusion teacher with a lot of ESE kids, I understand exactly what Ms. Miller is facing, trying to get the additional supplies and resources to teach these students. And so we know that if we approve this item tonight, there's a deficit in this curriculum with the ESE curriculum and the ELL curriculum. What steps are the board, is the district taking? Are we already reviewing supplemental material? When will that be available to the teachers? And are there teachers that are involved in the review of the supplemental material, not just district staff? So that we can make sure that we are reaching those students.
Through the chair to Board Member Joyce. I'm going to let Ms. Remfro answer. This time I'll let her go first, and then I'll come second.
Through the chair to Board Member Joyce. So we are looking at each curriculum, and we are doing this in conjunction with our ESE department under the direction of Gail Roberts. So through, just as we do currently, that, and let me back up to say that previous rubrics did not include an in-depth review of ESE and ELL prior to the ELA adoption period. So I give big kudos to Dr. Green as well for that. So we go through and we find sometimes it's queuing. Sometimes it's queuing language that we have to use for those maths. So it would just be a resource or it would just be embedded in the script language of the curriculum guide. So teachers don't have to hunt around. That is there for them. Or it could be a supplement. I will say that as a result of any adoption, starting with the ELA adoption, which was my first in this role, we hold teacher groups. So just like we hold teacher groups, we also have teachers that help us with overviews of the curriculum guide. When we change, we did that with our K through two this past year in ELA. We do that again. We'll go through those open call meetings with teachers so that they can also see those materials. And principals are also part of the implementation and planning of the training as a result. So they will either happen through curriculum guide queuing, or they will happen as a supplement. But we have to dig through all of the curriculum as we're building it to ensure we're hitting the mark right.
Thanks for that question, Board Member Joyce. To follow up, I had a quick question because I think there is a difference between having a supplemental material and then you talked about strategies too. So sometimes it's not having to purchase additional things. It's really about coaching up a teacher to have a strategy. Am I hearing that correctly?
That is correct.
Okay. And then the other quick question is around, when we talk about that percentage of eighty percent, seventeen percent that we were talking about, is that correlated directly to students? Or that is correlated more to that percent of that material that is deemed acceptable, if that makes sense? And that could be to Dr. Green or Ms. Remfro.
Through the chair to Chairman Willie. The percentage was about the reviewers who reviewed the curriculum and felt a certain percentage of it met expectations, partial expectations, or did not meet it. Not about the students.
Got it. Correct. Yeah, I just wanted to be clear because I think sometimes it's confusing because for the public may say, oh, eighty percent of students aren't going to be able to grasp this. And that's not the case. It's more the reviewer's opinion of it. So I appreciate that clarity. Other thoughts or questions on this item before we move? Okay? Seeing none, no more discussion, I'll call for your vote. By your action, you have approved this item seven to zero. Now move on to Chief of Staff Public Hearing and vote revisions to Chapter Two Board Policy. I'll ask Dr. Green to read the recommendation, a little bit shorter one this time.
That the Duval County School Board conduct a public hearing and adopt the recommended revisions to the following policies in School Board Manual, Chapter Two. Policy 2.35, Board Committees. Policy 2.38, Audit Advisory Committee.
All right. Open the public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak from the public? Seeing none, close the public hearing. Ask for a motion.
A move, second.
Moved by Board Member Anderson, second by Board Member Hershey. Are there any board members wishing to speak to this item? Board Member Anderson, then Board Member Hershey.
I just wanted to say thank you to Board Member Joyce and our policy and compliance team and our legal team for being able to bring this audit committee forward. I think in our role as a governing body, and we had a lot of conversation, we're back and forth, let's be clear. To be able to make sure that the policies that we have allow for transparency to the taxpayer, allow for involvement of the community in the process of how we operate as a school district, how we spend their public money. I was glad to be able to bring this forward during my chairmanship, and I'm so grateful to you for helping shepherd this through. I know you work closely with Board Member Pearson on this as well. And so thank you both for your leadership on this particular committee. And I am looking forward to seeing how it rolls out. And the community should be aware that we have this new opportunity to engage with our public schools.
Thank you, Board Member Anderson. Board Member Hershey?
So I remember in 2019, when Board Member Joyce brought this idea before the board, and the board looked a little different. And sometimes it's about timing. And so at that time, it was not something that the board embraced and opted to move through. And I think that, you know, as we have kind of, as we've progressed and the boards change, we recognize the need for more transparency. So I really want to thank Board Member Joyce because she did research, not only in the state of Florida, but throughout the nation. I know she spoke with boards that already have this and use their, what they already have in place as a model for what we have. It took a lot of time and research, and it took a lot of steadfastness and persistence because it would have been very easy to give up on this idea when you're a board member and you bring something like this in 2019, and it's 2022, and you finally bring it across the finish line. So I know that there was a lot of work and discussion about the policy, but I look forward to getting this Oversight Committee in place. I know that there are people in my district who are eager to have a seat at the table for that. And I again just want to commend Board Member Joyce for this vision that we did not all have in 2019, but it's the right time and the right place. So job well done, and I look forward to seeing how this Oversight Committee adds another layer of transparency going forward for our school district.
Thank you, Board Member Hershey. Board Member Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I too want to echo my compliments to Board Member Joyce on her four-year mission of having this advisory board established. I think initially, we felt that the school district is audited enough. And outside folks are always looking at the district. But through her patience and understanding and homework, she was able to convince us that this would add a degree of transparency, openness to what this district does. And another set of eyes on the processes that we have in place to make sure that they are consistent. And I think the, I think having a diverse group of folks from a different backgrounds, not just financial auditing, but processes and operations, I think will help this district and the community understand better many of the challenges we have financially and why we do the work that we do and why it is so costly. So thank you for your work and congratulations on the job well done.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Board Member Jones. Did I see a hand, Board Member Joyce? I know you can't get away without saying something. Board Member Joyce?
This is a great day for the taxpayers of Duval County. When I ran four years ago, I, one of the promises I made to my constituents was that if I was elected, that I would do everything to foster and ensure there would be transparency and trust with our almost $2 billion budget that we are entrusted with. And so I made that promise based on my experience, my many years' experience as a classroom teacher and understanding the importance of that. And so this is a day that joy fills my heart as we are about to approve the Audit Advisory Committee. And I look forward to engaging with our community, our professional men and women that do this work every day, to help us make the best and wisest decisions for the students of Duval County. Thank you. Thank you so much for your support in this.
Any others? I'll say I remember going into one of the first meetings where you were presenting on the different, and you were so excited about it. And I think it was excitement, not just because of the presentation and the information, but you knew, sort of saw a path of like insight that we could actually bring. So I appreciate that excitement did not wane, and you carried that over. And definitely excited to support this. Good. All right. Let's, I will go ahead and call for your vote. By your actions, you have approved this item seven to zero. Congratulations. We will move on to Board Member Travel. There's no Board Member Travel to approve for this month, but there are board members traveling this month. Superintendent Travel, there's no Superintendent Travel as well. We move on to For the Record, but before we move on to that, I want to just recognize our dear Rita over there. I just want to say thank you. I know that I just have a great connection. And I think that you are passionate about what you do and you care so deeply. So I just wanted to say, pause and just appreciate you today and say thank you to you.
Thank you. I really appreciate it. I really appreciate that.
Just wanted to throw that out there and make sure we acknowledge that today. So thank you so much for your service to this board.
Thank you, Chair Willie. I appreciate that.
Excellent. Any words? Rita, any words?
Oh, do I have words?
Can we say something before she does?
You can't, yes. I'm sure y'all already say things.
Could we just kind of do like a jump in for Rita?
Sure.
And then?
Jump in.
And then do it for the record?
I like it. We'll do a Rita for the record, and then we'll do a regular for the record. So let us shower you first. Any folks?
I'll start.
Go ahead.
You know, Rita, I feel like you were just getting started. So I feel like, you know, you kind of like were getting warmed up and getting things and figuring it out because I know it's a transition to come over and it's overwhelming. But I feel like you had just learned the ropes and, but I hate to see you go because I think that long-term in this position, it would have been beneficial for the district. And I wish you well. But like I said, I feel like you were just getting started.
Thank you.
Board Member Pearson?
Well, this was an action-packed year, and Ms. Mayor has joined us at a really rough time in a lot of ways. I only predated her by a couple months. So I have appreciated learning with you, and I have appreciated your openness and willing to take my calls and texts at odd hours sometimes when I needed help. And I wish you the best. But in my reply in the email was, I feel like that was a good news, bad news. Good news that we have a great and experienced person joining the team, bad news that we are losing you. And, but I do wish you well and completely understand after this year why someone would want to move on.
Thank you, Board Member Pearson.
We're going down the line.
We'll just work our way down the line. Board Member Anderson?
Thank you so much. Ms. Mayor, you know, I took over as the Chair in November of 2020. Is that real? That's the time. And had no idea that we would have a change in our legal representation through the Office of General Counsel, whom we had, was a steadfast leader, of course, among the district and who, you know, could answer all the questions if I had questions. And so welcoming you in and learning together during the chairmanship and making sure that we had everything we needed for the meetings and we could answer all of the questions and we knew if we needed to do Plan A, it was going to go Plan A, if it was going to go Plan B. You know, your willingness to jump in and learn and take it all on was like nothing I had ever seen before. I have been so grateful to have worked with you, and I am so blessed to know someone with such a hard work ethic and so much heart. And I thank you so much for the brief service that you have given us because even in that short amount of time, it was so much. And so thank you. Thank you for doing it, doing it with me even through really, really challenging times. I'm so, so grateful for you. I know it's not goodbye forever.
That's right.
We'll miss you.
Thank you, Board Member Anderson. Dr. Cooker?
So as the daughter of a lawyer who married a lawyer, whose daughter's now in law school and can't seem to get away from lawyers, I just, you are top-notch. And as a first-year board member, you provided just incredibly steady counsel all year long. I will tell you, having been in the legal community my entire life, I don't think many lawyers in our community have faced a year like you have faced this past year. And you did it with poise, you did it with grace, you did it with strategy. You sat back when appropriate, and you moved us forward when appropriate. And I just, I am grateful that my path crossed with you. I'm very grateful. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Board Member Joyce?
Ms. Rita, I beg her. Really, I've watched this last year. And when we had Ms. Chastain, you know, she obviously had years and years and years and years of experience. She'd been doing this, she could have done it with her eyes closed. And for you to move in at one of the most critical times in the district, and the conversations that we had on the dais and the thought and the decisions that had to be made on the spot was overwhelming for me. And you're guiding us through this legally, like, are we doing this appropriately? And my heart went out to you because, I mean, anybody in a new job, you have a learning curve, and it's a big one. You just don't know everything, don't know. And so I admire that you just, you hung in there and you worked hard and you didn't seem like you let any of it get to you. You just took one step and put one foot in front of the other and just kept it moving. And I will always remember that about you. And when I am in a situation that seems overwhelming, I will think about you, Ms. Mayor. And thank you again for taking our phone calls, my phone calls especially on the weekends and at night, and just being available for us. That's, that was just really sweet of you. Thank you so much. Done. Appreciate that.
Board Member Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess you got tired of sitting by me, so you're leaving. I don't understand, but she's been a trooper. She's done outstanding work for this district. She's fought for us. She's worked for us. She fought with us sometimes when she had to. But we really appreciate your dedication and the General Counsel made a good decision when he decided to move you over here. We really appreciate that. And I'm sorry you had to do five years of work in one year, but we appreciate all you did, and you got it. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I would say you are, I mean, you're truly a student and a teacher at the same time. I learned so much just having conversations with you about certain situations and what I needed to do. But at the same time, I would have one conversation, and then the next day or 24 hours, you'd say, well, I went back and I studied this, and I looked up this, and I talked to this person. So I just love that fight, that work that you always put into everything that you did, knowing what you were up against. So I just really appreciate it. And you always added levity to it where we could talk about other things too and sort of make sure that we showed care for each other in the midst of it all. So I really appreciated that as well. So thank you. And now I have a lawyer I can call.
Anytime. Anytime.
So now I'll turn it to you.
Yes. Thank you, Chair Willie. I am 100% overwhelmed. It's bizarre to be an attorney and not like to be the center of attention on personal notes, but I don't, but I cannot tell you how thankful I am for your words and how I think the General Counsel sent me here because everybody knew that my passion was for babies at OGC. I did quite a bit of ESE work there, and I do have a true passion for the district and just can't say enough, I have seen the behind-the-scenes, right? I've heard the conversations, and I literally cannot imagine a superintendent or a board that is more dedicated to the work that all of you do. And 100% here for the right reason and go, you know, all of you go above and beyond what the call is to make sure that these decisions for our kids are good ones and are made. You did not run me off. I can tell you if I, if I did not have two middle schoolers at home, this probably would be a different decision for me. If I could work like I did pre-kids, because you guys deserve it. You deserve the best, top-notch. And I will say it on the record, I prayed for Mr. Poole that someone like him would come along because I knew it was a rarity, and I wanted you guys to have the best care and guidance and counsel that you could have. So I'm super thankful that we were able to find him, and I'm excited for the work that he's going to be able to do. So thank you so much. I am but ever one phone call away at any time for any of you. And just thank you for all that you've done for me and your patience with me. I'm not sure that it was nearly as graceful as y'all described, but we made it. So thank you.
Thank you so much. We appreciate all of you've done, all of you've done. Thank you. Let's move into For the Record, and we'll actually just start where we started with Board Member Hershey, and we'll work our way down. I'll give you all a preview this time and not surprise you.
All right. So in January, I was able to host two chat with the superintendents, and I appreciate Dr. Green's willingness to work late two nights in January. That was probably only two nights, you had to work really late, right? And so one night, we were at Bartram Springs, which I think is the complete opposite end of the district than where Dr. Green lives, and she probably had a 45-minute or an hour drive after that. I want to thank Principal Wright at Bartram Springs for hosting us, as well as Principal Butterfield at Mandarin Oaks. It was not our largest attendance for this year for the chat with the superintendent, but it's always great to be together and in person. And the feedback that I continually get from the community and the reason I do these chats with the superintendent, and it's, you know, 99% Dr. Green, is because I continually hear how much they appreciate the opportunity to be in a small environment and to have, be able to connect with Dr. Green and talk about issues specific to District Seven. So I appreciate that. The other thing I would like to say is that I'm excited about this partnership that is happening in Board Member Joyce's district with, through UCF and the Children's Home Society. And Chairman Willie, St. John's County allows an annual report to come before the board and kind of give an update. And I'm just going to pitch that maybe at some point, that this partnership that is going on, it might be good to invite former Board Member Couch or the right person back to give an annual report on that partnership and what's happening. Like I said, they do it in St. John's County. That's just a suggestion. But I think that being the first one, I hope it's the first, I know it's the only right now, but I hope this is the first school that we will see get this accreditation and move forward. And I'm not going to say as much as I was, because we talked about it a little bit in curriculum, but I really want parents to understand and know and be assured that when we are picking curriculum or when students are assigned books to read, there are state lists provided by the Department of Education from the state of Florida that we are pulling from. We are not just randomly getting these ideas and books and pulling them in. And if I'm happy it's on the reading list that's recommended by the state of Florida, is on the Department of Education, I encourage you to look at it. If you can't find it, happy to send it to you. But just want to remind parents that we are taking guidance from the state in making those decisions. And I also want to make a comment regarding advocacy that the board does. I know that sometimes when people get on the soapbox or, you know, make a lot of noise, people say, oh, you're working and you're doing it. But I am confident that every member of this board is advocating for bills and is really a, not only an advocate, but a watchdog for public education, a champion for public education and students. And so while we might not be doing interviews or being as loud, I know from conversations that I have had with board members that calls are being made, meetings are being had, and I just want to assure the public that we are doing our part and we need you to do your part.
Thank you, Board Member Pearson.
I'm going to say some thank yous, some congratulations, and some good lucks. So thank you to Mr. Sores, Sores, and the Facilities Department and Chartwells for the ongoing cafeteria renovations. I got to see the new cafeteria at Sandalwood that the principal wanted to show off, and it was really cool. And I had a student jump into my car from Landon this week saying the renovations are going to be happening in the Landon cafeteria as well and was pretty excited about that, if she stays there long enough to see the whole product finished because she's an eighth grader. Thank you to our partners, J-Peth, Visestar Rotary Club of Duval County, and Florida Blue, and others for their sponsorship and production of the Eddie Awards. Thank you to the Jumbo Shrimp for partnering with the Office of Family and Community Engagement for the Red Tails movie and also the classic ballgame. We really do need our partners, and we appreciate your participation and leadership. Also, on a personal note, thank you to the students at Hogan Spring Glen, Southside Elementary, and Alden Road, who allowed me to sub as a para in the classes. Each class that I went into was different, and each one, I think I was helpful, but it was really helpful for, they said I was helpful, but I think they probably have to say that. But it was really helpful for me to see what's going on in pre-K, in a pre-K S-E-S?
SLA.
That one. And also in our, I don't know what you call it, but it's the 18 to 21 job training group at Alden Road. I loved them. And so if there's an opportunity to sub there again as a para, that you can call me for that because I really loved that class that I was in. It was really fun. I was so proud that we have that. We have that. Okay. And then congratulations to our 2022 Sunshine State Scholar, Charlotte Kakum from Wolfson, Dorothy Cabani from Sandalwood, both District Three, and then the third, Nyla Searle from Stanton. Congratulations to our 2022 School Related Employee of the Year finalist from District Three, Susanna Acosta from Hogan Spring Glen, Michelle Anne Holmzen from Love Grove, and Adriana Purcell from Inglewood Elementary. And good luck to our district athletes who are in winter sports going through their district tournaments. May many of you go to regionals and state. Wouldn't that be fun? Congratulations, or good luck to our Brain Brawl teams. I went a couple of Saturdays ago to the prelim. I am a Brain Brawl alumni. Raise your hand if you're a Brain Brawl alumni. Yes. So that was really fun, and then they have their finals later this month. Good luck to our Spelling Bee finalists. That is something not many of us achieve on our own without spell checks, so congratulations for that. Good luck to our honor choir performers. Good luck to our Scholastic Art Award nominees as well. And finally, good luck, and y'all go, to Douglas Anderson School, the Arts 36 Extravaganza, which is February 12th at 6:30 at the Times Union Performing Arts Center in the Moran Theater. Should you like to go, those tickets are available through Ticketmaster.com. And that's it.
Thank you, Board Member Pearson. Board Member Anderson?
I mean, that's hard to follow up.
Yeah. You guys have categories.
Who's the unofficial spokesperson? I will say my congratulations, I'll just start there, to Ms. Francine Colette Ella Box, Prayer Professional Elementary at Carrington Trail Elementary, and Sharon Johnson, Office Clerk from Allen McConney Elementary, who are both finalists as well in the School Related Employee of the Year. We won't announce those for a little bit longer, but I am excited to recognize that it takes a full village. Like, we talk a lot about teachers, and teachers are incredible spirits that are in front of our kids every day, but there are so many more hearts and hands and eyes and ears that make education possible. So thank you very much. I do want to invite everyone to join me and the superintendent at Landmark Middle School on February 16th at 6:00 p.m., where we will have a chat. So please come out and enjoy the time together. It's been a while since I've had just a regular old chat without any goal or purpose or intention. And so I'm just excited to see what the community has to bring to us. So please come and join us. I want to remind everyone that choice applications are due at the end of February, so don't miss that window. And the Five Essentials survey is out and available to parents, children, students, and teachers, and that is going on through February 25th. We really do look at this survey data. The superintendent and the district share it with us. Thank you so much. And it does matter to us what your experience is in the schools as a parent, as a student, or as a teacher. So please make sure you take the time, just a few minutes, to fill that out. And then last, but certainly not least, I do have some in the vein of advocacy that I think is important for us to take a moment because I have some concerns. So we're just in this place where we're so hyper-polarized in our thinking. So, we're just in this place where we're so hyper-polarized in our thinking and our conversation, and it's really concerning as I watch the legislative process play out this year. As Board Member Hershey mentioned, I know that everyone that sits up here is committed to public education and we're committed to our kids, and so I just want to remind everyone that as your elected representative, we are elected to the school board to represent an area, a specific district. This is how a representative democracy works. It is why local control and home rule is so effective, is because we can have a chat with you in the auditorium at the middle school and figure out what is important and what you need. We can hear your concerns. And as I watch some of the process that's happening in Tallahassee, I'm concerned that some of that is continuing to be eroded and taken away from our local relationship. We know that you know what's best for your community, you know what's best for your schools, and we want to be able to talk about that. I want to be able to talk about that with you, not have to go through our Tallahassee legislators, where we may not have a say, or through the Department of Ed to get charter schools approved, where those are your tax dollars. Part of the reason we exist is to safeguard your tax dollars and to represent you as a taxing authority. And so, it's taxation without representation, if we want to go all the way back to School House rocking. And so, please be engaged, understand what's happening at the legislative level. If you have questions, although we may not be out and loud, you know, doing news interviews and things like that, we can help you understand the bills that are going through, or we can at least let you know kind of how we feel about them, because we are representing you. And we take that job really seriously. I feel like I can speak for all of us when I say that. I don't want to belabor the point, I just will say that public schools exist so that we have an educated public to operate a free democratic society. It is important that we respect our teachers, that we trust them, that we understand and acknowledge that they are professionals, that they are deserving of a professional wage, and the space and the freedom to exercise their professionalism in the classroom, that we are making sure that at the end of the day, it's our kids that are benefiting from learning, and that we're not standing in the way of them being able to think freely, to be curious and to explore, and to decide who they are going to be in this world. So, with that said, I will leave you with a quote, hopefully, if it doesn't go away. It is a Desmond Tutu quote for Black History Month. He says, "My humanity is bound up in yours, for we can only be human together."
Appreciate that quote. Vice Chair.
Sure. Hard to follow that quote. That's a good one for right now, for sure. I want to start by thanking Principal Finley and Ms. Connor, the Assistant Principal at Arlington Elementary School. They had a one-hundred-year celebration for Arlington Elementary recently, and were kind enough to include me. Not often you get to go to a hundred-year birthday party for a school, so I went, because I heard there were cupcakes as well, and there were really good cupcakes. That being said, it was, it was just a great event. They actually pulled out artifacts from the last hundred years. I went through minutes from the nineteen-sixties and found that my Sunday School teacher had actually been the Vice President of the PTA there. It just, they really, they brought out old films and old artifacts that kind of reminded you of how far education has come. I will also say they planted a time capsule that's to be opened in another hundred years, and each grade level got to put something in the time capsule, they got to vote. One grade level did choose a face mask, so we'll see in a hundred, well, we won't be here in a hundred years. It'll be interesting to see what they think of that, but that was one grade level. I do want to thank again the teachers, the principal of the school. It is just this great, small, little elementary in Arlington, and they do great work and they have an incredible leader, so thank you for that celebration. It was a wonderful event for Arlington. Recently, Leadership Jacks held their Education Day, which is sponsored by Leadership Jacks, but it doesn't happen with a lot of effort from our school district. Board Member Hershey and I both had the opportunity to work on this event this past year, as well as Coretta Hill from JPEF. I will tell you that Dr. Green and Board Chair Willie started the day and knocked it out of the park, set the stage for what was a phenomenal day. I want to make sure that I say thank you to Tim Beagans at Riverside High School, Ms. Torino from Inglewood, and none other than the Dr. Gregory Bosick from Reballt High School for their parts in making the day a huge success and helping the community leaders that are in this program to really understand what we're up against all day long in our schools. There were a number of staff members also that were incredibly helpful with this. Want to make sure Paula Renfro, Chief Academic Officer, every year with this event, she just pulls it out, makes it happen no matter what the obstacles, and I cannot say thank you enough. The school visits don't happen without you, and that's, that's the highlight of the day always, so thank you to you. Also, a thank you to Vicky Schultz and Brandon Mack from the district as well. There are a number of people outside the district involved, but those are the district people that really make that day happen, and so thank you. While we talk about the legislative items that are going on in Tallahassee, and I feel confident that Board Member Pearson is going to keep us all focused on those items, I also want to remind the public, though, that COJ is currently hosting redistricting meetings in our high school. Dr. Green was kind enough to allow those to be hosted in our high schools, and those meetings are coming up. There are three more. There is one on February third at Atlantic Coast, February tenth at First Coast, and the last one will be on February seventeenth at Rains High School. They are from six to seven-thirty in the evening. As you are watching what's going on in Tallahassee, know that these maps will determine where your vote is counted in our city for city council and school board races, so it's incredibly important that people are watching those and being a part of it. I will say Board Chair Willie and I have been representatives on that committee as advisory members, and we have been really grateful for the collaborative work that's gone on with COJ on that. Want to make sure that we give a special shout-out to the Rules Committee Chairperson, Brenda Priestley Jackson, for being so inclusive of us in that process. And then, on a final note with that, and she's probably not going to like it, but I'm going to do it anyway, Chief of Staff Sanita Young has done an amazing job leading the efforts of other district leaders to make sure those meetings happen in our schools in a flawless manner. I know that they're COJ meetings, but you have been the liaison and glue to make them happen, so thank you for making that happen. And then finally, I just want to end with thanking our two speakers tonight, the student speakers, Finch Valou and Wisdom. Finch is from Terry Parker, and I will tell you, as you look at the bills that are coming through in Tallahassee, and you listen to the voices, the concerns, and the needs of our children, some of that is not completely matching, and we've got to figure out a way to make sure that the children we serve get what they need here in Duval County. So, with that, I close.
Appreciate that. Board Member Joyce.
Thank you. I'll be brief. This particular board meeting, our first February board meeting, when we recognize principals and assistant principals and teachers, is really special to me, because those are, in my heart of hearts, the people that are in the trenches doing the work, not that you guys are, but, you know. And so, it's just a blessing to be here and to see them be recognized. I want to thank Rachel and JPEF for the Teacher of the Year Eddie Awards that we were just invited to. There is nothing that blesses my heart more than watching not just the five, but all the Teachers of the Year walk across the stage, and they get dressed up, and it's such a big deal, because it's rare. It's rare that you say thank you to a teacher, and most of the time, they just get complaints, or, you know, it's hard, it's just hard work. And to have a partnership like with JPEF and Rachel and what you guys do to help our teachers feel special is, is just a blessing to my heart, and so thank you for that. The next item is, I wore my green and gold jacket tonight to recognize, to be a part of the celebration for Ed White and them becoming a community partner school. When I was at Stillwell, and we had our magnet program, the Military Leadership Program, a few years after that, Ed White adopted the Magnet Program, the Leadership Program, and then, right after that, we started this partnership with Children's Home Society to create this community partnership school, and we were modeling that after a school in Orlando. This has been a work in process. This has been a hard lift for the school to get this recognition, and so I am super excited to recognize them tonight, but I want to just really point out that this doesn't come without commitment and dedication, and I want to say thank you to Principal Baptiste. Fun fact, I probably have said this before, we were both cheerleaders at Stillwell in middle school, a long time ago. So, you can always tell when she shows up, she's got her cheerleading sort of sweater, and she's, she's, she's full of energy, she loves the kids, she loves the program, and she works tireless, tirelessly for this school. And I don't think this could have happened, honestly, in my heart of hearts, without her leadership, because it takes a lot of commitment from a principal to get, to get here, to get this honor and this recognition. So I just want to give a shout-out to Principal Baptiste and say thank you for the leadership at Ed White, and for the many wonderful things that I know with partnership with Dr. Green and the district, and all of the community partners that we have there. We are going to do amazing things for those students in, in our community. So, with that, that's it.
Thank you so much. Board Member Jones.
Thank you, Board Chair. I just want to give a shout-out to JPEF and Rachel and the outstanding job they did with the Eddie Awards. Having it televised for the second time, I think, was just fantastic to recognize so many of our outstanding educators. And just make sure that when you do the time capsule, you put those pants that Darren Willie had on, so we can preserve those for, for the next generations to come, so. But it was fun, I think, the teachers dressed, I mean, they were, they dressed well, they showed their colors, and they did a good job, so I just want to thank you and your partnership. Also, just want to extend my condolences to the Jimmy Johnson family, and who's been a trailblazer, who's been a leader, who's been a teacher, who really cared, who went off to school, came back and really cared about this community. He wanted to improve this school district, and he did, he gave his last to do that, and I just want to thank him and his family for that, their contributions. Also, I want to thank Mrs. Scott, a civics teacher at James Weldon Johnson, who, Ms. Young assigned me to James Weldon Johnson's sub one day, and Dr. Green thought I would miss the Eddie Award, because I'd be home sleeping trying to recover, but I've made it anyway. But it was, it was a good experience, one I hadn't had in probably twenty years in a classroom, but the students were very manageable, I'll put it that way. And also, thank you to Sessions Jones at Biltmore Elementary and Mrs. Talbot at SP Livingston for their reading literacy efforts, and I had a chance to read to those students and had a lot of fun. They were very excited. I had a, one kid who just talked all the time. I said, "Son, calm down." But then, so, you know, at that, at that, at that grade level, second and third grade, they're just excited about education, they want to talk to someone, and I just really enjoyed having that conversation with those kids, and it was fun. And last, for those who may not know, the World of Nations, which is a fun event to experience cultures throughout the world, right here in Jacksonville, is being held on the twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh of this month, so if you have a chance to go out there and get your passport and visit some of the outstanding entertainment and foods that they offer, foods that they have from different cultures, and beers from different parts of the country, of the world, I think it's a good opportunity. So I just want to give a shout-out to them and the outstanding work they do in educating this community about how diverse our community is. So thank you, Mr. Jones.
Thank you for that so much. Once again, just to echo the statements made by my fellow board members, the Teacher of the Year ceremony was amazing. Thank you, Rachel, who's in the audience today, for always putting on a great event, celebrating our teachers, who deserve it more than, than anyone in our community right now. And of course, special shout-out District Four, Jean Rebeau, Mr. Magna Louio. Just, if, you all heard him, you saw the videos, he's like that all the time. That's who he is, it's what he brings to the table. His students love him, the staff love him, and I think he's so deserving of that award, and I'm excited that, that he has it, and he's going to represent our district well, so congratulations, Mr. M. As I tell my, my kids, my daughters, it's Black History Month now, but it's Black History Month every month, because you're always making history, but it's great that we can pause as a district and celebrate that, so I love seeing the different things that we're doing. Excited to take my family, and I encourage others to go out to some of the screenings and the other events that are going on. As you know, this last week was Literacy Week, what a fun time for the week, just seeing everything on social media. Got a chance to pop by a few schools. Pine Estates was a great host, we had fun there. Garden City, got to go into a classroom and read, and I asked the students, "Hey, any questions?" And one of the young ladies, it was first grade, she said, "Can we be friends?" And I said, "Yes." And then, of course, when she said it, everybody's like, "Can we be friends too?" So now I have a lot of friends when I go back. And of course, I was a mystery reader at Biscayne, and I think there was a mistake, because I think I was reading a book by LeBron James, so they thought LeBron James was coming. So when I popped in, they were like, "Wait a second, he is not LeBron James." But nonetheless, we read the book that LeBron James wrote, it was a great time at Biscayne, we had a fun time. So Literacy Week was, was amazing, and I'm glad that we, we got to interact there. Mentioned the redistricting meetings, a great host, Principal Baptiste hosted our first one, she's phenomenal, love her. She even has her picture out front on a mural, if you have not seen that, I mean, that's pretty legit. So, just thank you to all of our principals who are also hosting, because they have to also open up their buildings, but great conversation that happens, and what better place to do it than our schools, have that civic dialogue and conversation. Another shout-out, we have a group that's coordinating this, the ones that, what I mentioned earlier. Actually, the twenty-third, we worked with the Jaguars to actually host it at the Jaguar Stadium, so it's going to be an amazing time, if you think about it. Two hundred or so African-American male teachers in one place, getting to see each other, interact, building community together is just, I just, I'm so excited just to see that take place. So thank you. JPEF has also been helping us to, to work with the Jaguars and some other things, so Rachel, once again, thank you for that. Thank you to Board Member Pearson, we're getting ready to go to the day in the legislature. She's done a lot of work with our lobbyist, Kim Miller, on just making sure we're aware what's going on. I know she's been watching things at soccer games and other things, so I just appreciate that, and I'm glad we're working as a board, because I know that these things are, they're always moving, like these bills, and these things are always moving, so we have a great team of folks who are looking at that, to make sure we're putting our energy into the right places, especially as these bills ebb and flow. Last, I just want to recognize Ms. Lorraine Allen, she is one of our employee finalists, she's over at Oceanway Middle School, she's worked in the district for years. In fact, I believe she's retiring after this year, so what a great way to go out for her, so congratulations, Ms. Allen. And one of the things, I'll just close this way, we marched in the Martin Luther King Parade, and I had, my girls had shirts on, and it was "Dream King Size Dreams." That's what their shirt said, "Dream King Size Dreams." So I'll just leave with that sort of statement as we move into Black History Month, and thank you, Board, for all the work that you continue to do. Ms. Mears, thank you so much, you'll be missed, and we appreciate you, and you are definitely, you're in my phone forever, so.
I hope so, thank you.
All right, for the, seeing no other statements or comments.
Most adjourned.
Move to adjourn, Board Member Anderson, any second?
Second.
Second by Board Member Pearson, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, any opposed? All right, yes, have it, thank you so much, meeting adjourned. Meeting adjourned.